Columbus, Georgia. This is your City Council. Mayor Teresa Tomlinson. City Manager Isaiah Hughley. Pops Barnes, District 1. Glenn Davis, District 2. Bruce Huff, District 3. Evelyn Turner-Pugh, Mayor Pro Tem and District 4. Mike Baker, District 5. Gary Allen, District 6. Mimi Woodson, District 7. Walker Garrett, District 8. Judy Thomas, Post 9 at Large Counselor. Skip Henderson, Post 10 at Large Counselor. Tony Washington, Clerk of Counsel. And City Attorney Clifton Fay. Columbus, Georgia. This is your City Council.
Well, good morning, everyone, and welcome to the May 9th meeting of the Columbus City Council. We're so glad to have you with us. I say often that we have a full agenda, and today we have a full agenda, of course. But because we can't get enough of your good government, we're just going to prolong it. At 1:00, we're going to begin our budget hearings. So if you'd like, just sit around, stay with us, and you'll see how your city government works. But we do appreciate you being here. And we're going to go ahead and jump on in and call forward Reverend Joel Alvis with First Presbyterian Church. He's going to provide us with the invocation this morning consistent with his faith tradition. Good morning.
Good morning, Madam Mayor, Council members, and ladies and gentlemen. I invite you to join your hearts with mine in prayer as your faith tradition exercises itself. Let us join together. High and holy God, you are the one from whom we came and the one to whom we will return. Bless our daily task in all of our coming and all of our going. Provide wisdom for the daily rounds for all the citizens of Columbus and Muskogee County, and especially for those who lead through elective service, for those who are charged to provide public safety, for those who ensure community order. We ask that your goodness and your justice will be with us in all things. Clear our minds, touch our hearts, focus our visions, direct our paths, hear our prayers. Amen.
Amen. Reverend Alvis, thank you so much for that, and thank you for what you and First Presbyterian do for this community. We appreciate you greatly. We have a great surprise for you all. Bat in your hatches, because we have the St. Luke, I think it's second graders. Is it second, what grade?
Third graders.
Third graders today, and they are ready to go. They've been practicing, so they're coming on in. Let's come in and get them assembled up front. And if you all would stand as they get assembled, and they will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. You guys ready to go?
A lot of them, yes.
All right, let's go.
(Singing) The flag of the United States of America. Into the republic where it stands, one nation under God, and invisible with liberty and justice for all.
Awesome. Give them a round of applause, everybody. You guys did such a good job. I want you to introduce yourselves. Tell us your name and how old you are.
I am Capson, and I am nine years old.
I'm Ethan, and I'm nine years old.
I am Christopher, and I am nine years old.
I'm William, and I'm nine years old.
I'm Harrison, and I'm nine years old.
I'm Megan, and I'm nine years old.
I'm Aaron, and I'm nine years old.
I'm Sam, and I'm nine years old.
I'm Wilson, and I'm nine years old.
I'm Will, and I'm nine years old.
I'm William, and I'm nine, and I'm nine years old.
I'm Owen Beck, I'm eight years old.
I'm Bella, and I'm nine years old.
I'm Claire, and I'm nine years old.
I'm Lily, and I'm nine years old.
I'm Stella, and I'm nine years old.
I'm Casey, and I'm nine years old.
I'm Whitney, and I'm nine years old.
I'm Riley, and I'm nine years old.
I'm Will, and I'm nine years old.
I'm Brielle, and I'm eight years old.
I'm Caroline, and I'm nine years old.
I'm Lily, and I'm eight years old.
I'm Addie, and I'm nine years old.
I'm Laney, and I'm nine years old.
I'm Olivia, and I'm nine years old.
I'm Heatherly, and I'm nine years old.
I'm Eliza, and I'm nine years old.
I'm Kayla, and I'm nine years old.
I'm Emily, and I'm nine years old.
I'm Mackenzie, and I'm nine years old.
I'm Lily, and I'm nine years old.
I'm Pepper, and I'm nine years old.
I'm Lila, and I'm nine years old.
I'm Bron, I'm nine years old.
I'm Kyra, and I'm nine years old.
I'm Jake, and I'm nine years old.
I'm Ethan, and I'm nine, eight years old.
I'm Akai, and I'm nine years old.
I'm Thomas, I'm Thomas, and I'm nine years old.
I'm Weaver, and I'm nine years old.
I'm Kait, and I'm nine years old.
I'm Jack, and I'm nine years old.
I'm Mason, and I'm nine years old.
I'm Logan, and I'm nine years old.
I'm Emerson, and I'm nine years old.
I'm Nathan, and I'm nine years old.
I'm Sophie, and I'm eight years old.
I'm Ava, and I'm nine years old.
I'm Walt, and I'm nine years old.
I'm Cam, and I'm nine years old.
I'm CJ, and I'm nine years, I'm eight years old.
I'm Gabby, and I'm nine years old.
I'm Trinity, and I'm eight years old.
I'm Amelia, and I'm eight years old.
I'm Reagan, and I'm eight years old.
I'm Noah, and I'm nine.
I'm Whitfield, and I'm nine.
I'm Virginia, and I'm eight.
I am Lily, and I'm nine.
I'm Clara, and I'm nine.
Did we miss anybody? All right. Well, I see we've got a bunch of great teachers with us. Let's let them introduce themselves as well.
I'm Ms. Patel.
All right.
I'm Ms. Slay. I'm Jennifer Parker, and I'm their lower school principal.
Hi, I'm Angela Blankenship.
I'm Carvin Boyce.
Wonderful, and I know we've got just a few parents, just a few parents and friends. If you're, if you're a family member, supporter of these great third graders at St. Luke, please stand up. Let's recognize them as well, folks. Well, we're so glad to have you all with us. You did really an excellent job. So will you come back sometime and help us out again?
Yes, ma'am.
Good, because we need it.
We have one thing that we want to talk to you.
Yes. Oh, okay, all right.
We brought you these mugs, and we have a couple of goodies inside of them for you.
All right. Well, thank you very much. That is so great. We could use this, so that'll help us get through the meeting.
And the sticks inside were things that the kids said that they're thankful for in Columbus, and then they're also things that they're praying for you about, too.
Thank you very much.
So they can pull them out each day and look at them.
All that's so wonderful. Well, we didn't expect treats, but we're so grateful for them, so thank you all. But, yeah, we've got one more over here.
Need one more?
I think we're done.
Thank you for having us.
Hey, thank you all so much. Let's give them a big round of applause, folks. Precious little things. Yeah. Aye, thank you so much. Well, I guess they didn't want to stay for our budget session. Yep, peanut butter sandwiches and recess in their future. All right, well, it's so great to see our young people in this community, and so I appreciate you all applauding them because they do practice. Thank you all. All right, we'll go on and get on to our agenda. As you all know, we have an annual report from our Columbus Airport. It's the annual update, and we're fortunate to have Director Richard Howell with us here this morning. Richard, good morning, and thank you for coming and giving us a little update about our important airport.
Good morning. I'm Richard, I'm nine years old. No, I'm sorry. Madam Mayor, members of council, thank you very much for giving me some of your time today. As you may recall, earlier this year, I was in front of you giving you our fiscal '15 annual report. And I told you, because that was in July, I told you, we're going to get that one, pair of the time down in that a little bit. So I am here today to give you our fiscal 2016 annual report from the Columbus Airport Commission. So just real briefly, some of the stuff we're going to, I'm going to go over with you today. I do have a brief executive summary. There is a financial summary I want to talk to you about. As a part of the airport strategic plan, we have developed annual objectives. I wanted to tell you how we perform there, and then just give you a real brief 2017 outlook, which, it's May. 2017 is moving right along. I can say, you know, just from the overview, the performance from the airport's been pretty good. Hasn't been outstanding, wasn't bad, but we had a good year when it was all said and done. We did see a little bit of decline in our revenue over expenses, but that was largely due to, we had a number of projects on the books that we were using previously reported income. More often than not, was passenger facility charges, which I think I'll talk a little bit about later on. So as that money flowed through when we did the audit, the auditor saw that the bottom line numbers look a little more dire than they really are. Our strategic goals and objectives were pretty much met. There were some impacts of exterior forces that caused us to miss one. But overall, we really, we had a positive outlook in July for 2017, and I can tell you, you know, in May of fiscal year 2017, we're going pretty well, and we're pleased with how the airport's performing. So looking at the financial summary, I mean, all eyes are generally drawn to the bottom line there. And as I said, you know, we did have some pass-through money that impacted our revenues over expenses. But we did manage to raise our revenue a little bit, and we did manage to cut back our expenses a little bit at the end of the day. So we're very pleased about that. Talking about annual objectives, in July of 2015, the Airport Commission passed its first-ever airport strategic plan. It's a five-year plan. We had two sets of objectives. We had developmental, and we had financial. Our developmental objectives were to plan for obsolescence, something that really hadn't been done in the past. We were also trying to maximize our federal and state funding availability. Of course, you realize how important that is to our airport. And we want, of course, to meet all our regulatory requirements, given the facilities that we have. Five-year objective's a little more concrete. We're wanting to establish over the five years a 90-day operating cash fund of $1.16 million. Annually, we need to identify our debt needs, make sure we can handle them with the cash flow we have. We're looking to increase non-aeronautical revenue by 20% over the five years. And we're also looking to reduce our cost per in-plane passenger by 40%, with 25% of that in the first three years. This CPE number is a really important number for us. The cost for in-plane passengers is one of those factors that an airline will look at when they're coming into an airport. Essentially, what the cost per in-plane factor means is exactly what it says. I, as Delta Airlines, how much does it cost me operating out of the Columbus Airport to put one passenger on the airplane for a flight? Our numbers were relatively high as compared to the national average. The reason for that was up until 2013, 2014, we had been pouring debt service on the building. That debt service has been paid off, so now we're in the mode of trying to realign that CPE back down to where it's more aligned with other airports, so we can be more competitive in our air service marketing. So looking at our '16 results for development, we do five-year capital planning to plan for obsolescence. Staff has, you know, jumped into this with both feet. It's worked out very, very well. We adopt this plan as a part of our budget, which you all see shortly. The Commission just adopted our '18 budget a couple of months, a couple of weeks ago. We did maximize, we felt, our FAA and state funding very well. We got $3.1 million in fiscal '16 from, with grants awarded from both the state and the feds. And then annually, we are evaluated by the Federal Aviation Administration and the Transportation Security Administration on how we conduct business at the Columbus Airport, and we pass both those inspections with flying colors. So, got all three of those out of the way. Looking at our financial reports, increased operating cash, 1.06. I'm very pleased to say we did an outstanding job with that. We actually exceeded that 1.06, 1 point, should be 1.6 million, with 1.26 million in reserves. And of course, we were a couple of years ahead of schedule with that. This was a five-year plan, I would remind you. We did identify our debt needs. Fortunately, last year, we didn't have any, so we're very pleased with that. Where we fell a little bit short is increasing our non-aeronautical revenue. Now, non-aeronautical revenue is any other revenue we generate that has nothing to do with an airplane. So non-aeronautical revenue, easy piece to identify, a few rental cars, parking, those type activities are non-aeronautical revenue. And also, we refer to as non-airline revenue on top of that. We fell a little bit short. Part of the reason was we were implementing a new advertising campaign. We had some delays from contractors and vendors to get the infrastructure in place. We wanted to do, you know, sign boards like you have in here. And also rollout of new concession agreements for taxicabs, and also for our rental car providers, started running over fiscal year. So we had some timing issues, and we just had some outside issues. But we're looking to get back on track this year and moving into fiscal '18. However, we were successful in bringing our CPE down by the 5% we had targeted for fiscal '16. Actually, we brought it down 8%. And bluntly, that is cuts to the fees that Delta pays us, and Delta and whoever else would come in the market later on. So other accomplishments, I'm not going to go over all these. I just wanted to provide you kind of a list of, give you an idea of some of the things that are going on. Some of the high points, I mentioned passenger facility charges. We have to apply for that with FAA every year, or every, when the application runs out. So we were up to do that last year. Of course, I did the first annual report for you all last year. And we did bring in a new aviation fuel supplier through competitive bid, and the reason I highlight that is it was a very competitive bid, and that has actually given us the wherewithal where we can lower our fuel prices, make ourselves a little more attractive, both to our tenants and people passing through. So that was important to us. Looking ahead to this year, and like I say, it's May, we've burned through a lot of this year, but we're looking to develop new rentals, new revenues. We have gone to RFP for new rental car contracts. They went into effect December 1st. We are going to see some increased revenues from that. The Republic Parking Contract runs out the end of this month. The Commission is planning on taking that in-house, and we're going to be installing a new parking lot revenue control system, which will be completely automated. It'll be an unattended system, but looking into '18, we'll be seeing new revenues from that. Rehabilitation projects for those runways, I can say, those, both those projects are done at this particular point in time. We are working on the environmental planning. We do have some deficiencies in our safety area, which is that dirt area off the end of the runway that we have to take care of. We'll probably take care of that this summer. And we're also conducting, we conducted an inventory, and we're working on removing trees that obstruct our approaches to the airport. Actually, we're having public meetings about that this afternoon. One of the other kind of jewels in our hat looking forward will be the assessment for the Passenger Terminal Modernization Plan. I'll talk a little bit about that in a minute. And of course, the foundation of all the work we've been doing for quite some time is recruiting new air service. And as I've shared with you in the past, our primary goal is to get air, daily service into Charlotte, North Carolina. So that was kind of the, our annual report in a nutshell. One thing I did want to share with you is the Commission's Vision 2020 Plan. This is a branding initiative that the Commission came up with, and we released it to the public last week. Where we've been over the last couple of years is, as you saw by our list of things that we're doing, we're doing work on runways, and we're hiring new fuel people, and we're doing a lot of work out on the field, realigning taxiways. But as we move forward from 2007, from calendar year '17, moving into calendar year 2020, we're really starting to look at public use projects that our users see, things that they see, that they'll touch. Some projects we have this year are, we're going to replace our, all our wayfinding signs out on the land side. For those of you that have been at the airport, you've seen our beautiful, great, big, blue signs. We're going to be replacing those. We're also, as I said, we're doing the parking lot upgrade. We're also looking forward to doing a, this year, a landscaping project, which part of it's already taken place at the FBO. So that's part of the reason we've come up with the branding initiative. And a final project that we're looking for in 2020, of course, would be a terminal modernization. So there's our logo that we're going to be using. It's, you know, Vision 2020, Forward With Focus. The logo, as with all logos, it means something. Of course, the blue is the sky, the green is the earth. Many of you know through previous logos, CSG is our three-letter identifier. So the CSG indicates that the Commission's leadership is well-grounded. The airplane swooping forward, and the zeros, if you can see it, in the 2020, our little jet engines, that represents modern aviation. Of course, the letters are canted to demonstrate the Forward With Focus. And then when you look in the middle, there's a pillar, excuse me, and what the pillar designates, that the center of our vision is our support to this community. So you'll be seeing this at the airport as we do projects. The logo will be coming up. Should we recruit a new airline into the market, the FAA has certain rules with how we advertise stuff, so you'll be seeing this logo if we were to, you know, have advertising for that. But it's something we want to be able to demonstrate to the community that things are moving forward, things are happening at the airport. And as, with these projects, they'll actually begin to see these things. There's a lot different, say, hey, we did a runway project, and people go, yawn, yeah, that's, that's great. So with that, I appreciate, I'll take any questions, but I appreciate your time.
Great. Well, it looks like we don't have questions because your presentation was so thorough.
Thank you very much.
But we do appreciate what you do, and we know it's an ever-changing industry, obviously. All you have to do is wake up in the morning and turn on the news and see that some airline somewhere is struggling with yet another evolution of the industry. But in any event, thank you for what you do, and we appreciate you bringing this important service to our community.
Thank you. We appreciate the support of council, and your support also, Madam Mayor.
Sure.
We do appreciate it.
Well, we make a good partnership. Thank you very much. All right, we have minutes from our April 11th, 2017 council meeting. We've got a motion and second for approval. Any edits? No? All those in favor, please state aye. Great. And we will move on to our agenda, where we're going to have, excuse me, the City Attorney's Agenda, and we have Assistant City Attorney Lucy Scheftel here with us today to lead us through that. Lucy.
Good morning, Madam Mayor and councilors. The first item up is a second reading of an ordinance amending and updating Chapter 8 of the Columbus Code pertaining to building and code inspections. On this one, before I ask for a vote, Director Hutchison would like to make a few more comments to elaborate on his comments at the last first-reading meeting.
Okay. Good morning.
Good morning. I know kind of with the property maintenance issues that we've been discussing in the last few council meetings, I did kind of want to bring up that. When I came the first time, my presenting was anything I knew that would change any fees or budgeting, things like that. Property maintenance is one of the things we do as a part of my department, and I just kind of want to kind of flesh out that so everyone understands where we are there. What we currently enforce, the way the, the way the Columbus Code is written is called the Housing Code, which then it kind of puts me into this shell where I can only enforce property maintenance and issues on residential structures. So my intent is to open it up to all structures, commercial structures, any, any structures that are vacant or abandoned. So these are things that we already look into, decks, working appliances, making sure, you know, tenant-owner relationships, we have working air, working heat, water, you know, those type of main necessities. We check on failing electrical systems, mechanical system, and plumbing systems. We already do that currently, but that's only, like I said, in the, more in the residential realm. Ideally, what we want to do is to open it, so, because currently that section is in the code. It says all buildings, but currently the way it's under the Housing Code right now, it just says all residential buildings. So what we're doing is we're taking that out, so we can go after commercial properties that have become vacant or abandoned, or fallen in, and things like that. We can also continue to do the maintenance of existing buildings, even if they are vacant, if they're not secured or properly taken care of. So we can, we'll also have the ability to enforce that as well. Any defacement of property, graffiti, anything like that. Fences, which has usually been something we don't permit, but if a fence is falling on somebody else's property, we typically try to stay out of that, but if you're maintaining your property securely, then your fence needs to also be a part of that property that's being secured. So these are things that we're adding into it based off of the International Property Maintenance Code, and so I just kind of want to spell that out before, that's also a part of the ordinance changes. So that's.
We have a question from Council Henderson.
Thanks, John. Just for clarification, so if there is a residential piece of property that is owner-occupied, and they have no electricity, or no heat, or no water, that is governed by your department? You can cite them?
Now, if it is a owner that lives in that property and chooses to live that way, because we have a few issues like that, if they choose to live what's called off-the-grid, there's nothing for us to enforce that. Now, if it's a tenant that's living in the property, and they call and say, hey, I don't have any power, you know, we call Georgia Power, we kind of figure out who owns the property, where's the, what's the bill? What's the issue? What's causing them from getting that? And then we can enforce that on them to make sure they get power, make sure they get water back if it's a tenant-owner. But if it's somebody that's choosing to live that way, I'm kind of, I still don't really have too much.
I know Council Barnes and I are thinking about the same situation. And I just, it, you know, it strikes me as odd that if somebody lives that way long enough, it will have an impact on surrounding and particularly contiguous lots. And I guess that follows state law, though, as to what we're able to do.
There's no, State of Florida has an off-the-grid law. But it's, like I said, it's statewide that you can't live off the grid in the State of Florida. But in Georgia, we don't have any such off-the-grid.
All right, that's what I thought. I just wanted to make sure when I saw you.
Lucy, following up on that, have you checked on that? Because a lot of times, if the state law is silent, then localities are not preempted. It's only when the state law speaks to an issue that, that we are preempted. So maybe a little bit more research.
Wouldn't hurt to investigate.
That might be possible, but our whole system, if John can correct me if I'm wrong, is we're adopting the state codes here for consistency's sake, and
Correct.
to make a change in that respect would deviate from the state code.
Well.
Well, it might be something that council wants to consider, though.
Yeah, and I have, listen, I get it. There's a lot of folks that are wanting to live off the land, live off the grid, as you, as you said. But to me, there ought to be a minimum lot size, and, and, you know, I don't want to, I don't want to get too deep into it now because you get very arbitrary, and I get that. But I would love to at least see some thought or some research put into that, and see if there are other communities that have tightened that up a little bit, and maybe, I don't, you know, I want consistency with the state unless being consistent with the state creates challenges for our folks living here.
Thank you. We'll look into it.
Thank you.
Yeah, I know council has asked that we, and I know they're submitting suggestions, Lucy, to you and to John, but if we're going to take a comprehensive look at adjusting some of our ordinances related to special enforcement and code enforcement, that would be one of the issues. And if, if state law doesn't preempt it, and it's council's will, then I think we can go ahead and pass something that's local. So, any event, Councilor Baker?
And I understand, well, I don't understand, but, but listening to you, I see why, as far as the state law goes. But if you don't have water, that doesn't preclude that you must have a well? I mean, I could see opting out for a well, but you don't have to have either one?
Well, like I said, just like in certain parts of the area, we don't have a sewer system, but you have a septic system. Like I said, it kind of infringes on people's protected rights. If they choose to live that way, and they're the owner of that property, like I said, we have, you know, we can, you know, we're notified of it, and we pursue it, and then we find out, you know, maybe an owner can't afford to pay their water bill. I mean, we don't have the right to step in and pay for, you see them, so a lot of times, there's things that, it's kind of out of my jurisdiction, anything I can enforce.
I understand. I mean, at some point, it becomes a public health issue.
No, I understand. So like I said, as of right now, like I said, if it's a tenant-owner relationship, we can throw the book out. We can go after anything, but if an owner is choosing to live in that situation, it's the hoops and protected rights of them, it's a lot harder to be able to enforce it.
Right. Okay, thank you.
Okay. All right. Thank you, John, and this is on second read. I don't see any further discussion related to this item. So we've got a motion and a second for approval, and it is queued for your voting. Let's see, I think we're missing somebody. There we go. All right, and it did pass.
Thank you. Our next item is the second reading on a companion ordinance that makes the corresponding changes in the Unified Development Ordinance to connect with the ones you just adopted for Chapter Eight in the code.
We've got a motion and second for approval, there being no discussion. It is queued for your voting. And it does pass.
Thank you. Now, moving to first readings, we have three zoning matters to take up. The first is an ordinance rezoning approximately 22 acres at 705 35th Street. And the proposed rezoning is to plan to mixed-use development from LMI. The proposed use is a senior adult living facility, affordable housing apartments, self-storage, medical clinic, and commercial retail. Both staff and PAC recommend approval. And I believe our applicant, Ms. Lucy Jones, is here.
Okay. We've got Councilor Allen.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to let council know that I have, I've met with the landowner and Ms. Jones and talked through the issues. Have not heard anything from any of the neighbors out there. This is probably the least intrusive development that could occur on that property, and I'm in support of it. So I would like, ask your consideration.
Okay. Anything further for the applicant? Do you want to call for opposition, Lucy?
Is there anyone who wishes to speak on first reading, either in favor or opposition to the ordinance?
Okay, it looks like you're good. Thank you so much.
This will come back for a vote on the 23rd at 5:30. All right. Next, I'll call the rezoning ordinance for 8.6 acres located at 6,000 Warm Springs Road. The current zoning is SFR 3, and the proposed rezoning would be to residential office, RO. The proposed use is a senior adult living facility, and the Planning Advisory Commission and the Planning Department recommend conditional approval. And let me go ahead and say that the condition, though not stated in the ordinance that was posted on Friday, is that parking requirements shall be reduced to 1.25 spaces per unit, and that parking requirements be the leasing, for the leasing office shall be increased to a maximum of seven spaces. So I would ask for an amendment for those conditions.
Okay, we've got a motion and second for the amendment. I know we have Council Allen wanting to speak to the ordinance itself. Is there any discussion on the amendment? All right, seeing on all those in favor of the amendment, please state aye. Are there any opposed? Okay, and now to the ordinances amended, Councilor Allen.
The applicant for this ordinance is also Ms. Lucy Jones, and she is here to respond to questions. And I don't know if there are councilor questions first before we.
But let's hear from Councilor Allen and.
Well, as I sit here a little red-faced, I think I jumped the gun. So this is the rezoning that I was mentioning earlier. Not heard any comments from the landowners, and it's the least intrusive for this area, so. My earlier comments were for this one, I apologize.
All right. We've got, let's see, or Councilor Garrett?
I'll reiterate what Councilor Allen said, though, because 705 was in my district, which is near Fox Silvermanery, and it will be a great improvement to my district. But I also saw the plans for this one as well, so they both, both look like they're going to be big improvements for the community and be good for Columbus.
Okay. Anything further on this item? It is on first read. Lucy, did you want to call further comments?
Anybody who wishes to speak in favor of the ordinance? Anyone opposed? It will also be back for a vote on May the 23rd as amended.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
And finally, our last rezoning is rezoning approximately 2.34 acres located at 1532 Fifth Avenue. This is the parcel containing Claflin School. The current zoning is LMI, and the proposed rezoning is UPT, Uptown. Proposed use is multifamily residential and education. In this case, the city is the applicant, so we'll have Mr. Johnson address this rezoning.
Thank you. Good morning. Back when we were approached about redeveloping this property through friends of Claflin and their development partner, we looked at the zoning, one of the things that they needed for their project, and really didn't realize that Claflin was zoned light manufacturing, which it will never, ever be used that way, nor do we want it used that way in our Uptown area. So taking what they wanted to do and moving forward, we decided the highest and best use for that property, for this development or any future development, regardless of what they're planning, would be a UPT zoning, which is a full mixed-use zoning that we use in Uptown. So if we eliminate the hurdle of rezoning and use the best maximum zoning classification for this site, regardless of this proposed development, that is one hurdle we will not have to overcome in the future for the redevelopment of Claflin School.
Will, I apologize, I'm sure I'm confused, but you mentioned this was in the Uptown District. Is this in the Uptown District?
We have, we have two, we have two zonings
Okay.
in Uptown. One is the CRD, the Central Riverfront District, which is roughly the river to Third Avenue and Ninth up to Fourteenth, I think. And then we have Uptown, which goes from Third over to Sixth.
Okay, so it is.
They're, they're two separate zonings, but use-wise and whatnot, they're exactly the same.
It was just so close to the Liberty area, I thought maybe it was down there, so. Okay, thank you. Anything for Will on this? Lucy, did you want to call further comments?
Are there any comments in favor of this ordinance? Any public comment opposed?
We have Councilor Thomas, too.
Mr. Johnson, tell me, I want to go back to what the mayor was saying with the Uptown designation and the planned mixed-use development. Tell me what the differences are there. What can they do as Uptown that they couldn't do as planned development and vice versa?
The planned mixed-use development is an overlay. So you have an underlying zoning, which LMI would not work there either. We'd have to do a, rezone the property and then put the overlay over it. And then you dictate what uses you would want to use in the planned mixed-use development. But the underlying zoning controls lot size, lot width, all the particulars of zoning. The UPT is a zone itself that allows a mix of uses.
Well, I guess part of my confusion is that both the ordinance, rezoning ordinance that Ms. Jones just got for that property over by Meredith Mills is the PUD.
That's right. UPT does not extend beyond the railroad tracks, so you couldn't use it somewhere else.
Here's, that's adult senior housing is going in over there by where the Meredith Mill was. And this is not necessarily senior housing, but multifamily development, right?
And we consider senior independent living facility is multifamily. It's when assisted comes along that it's a convalescent or nursing home. But it's just age-limited, 55, usually 55 and over.
Okay. I don't have a problem with the rezoning. I was just sort of confused as to why there seem to be three different types of zoning for the same ultimate end.
Zoning will make your eyes bleed.
Well, they're well on their way. Thank you, Mayor.
There being no other comments, that'll be back for a vote on the 23rd.
Thank you.
And that concludes our agenda.
Okay. No executive session?
No.
Great. All right, we've got, now we have public agenda. And so we want to call forward citizens who would like to address comments to council. And first, we have Susan Gallagher, who's representing New Horizons. Good morning.
Good morning, Senator Allen.
Just as Susan gets up to the lectern, everybody, we'll have two five-minute segments, and you'll get a warning at five minutes, so.
Okay, thank you. Good morning, City Council. Thank you for allowing me to be here today. Susan Gallagher with New Horizons Behavioral Health. As many of you know, we've been around for, oh, quite a few years here in Columbus, serving the mental health and addictive disease needs of children, teens, adults, and families in the community. Just wanted to let you know, can you hear me? Just wanted to let you know that May is Mental Health Awareness Month. And I'm passing around a basket with you. They've got some real nice bracelets with a green ribbon on them because green is the color for mental health awareness. New Horizons is in the forefront for providing treatment and reducing stigma for children, teens, families, and adults living with and recovering from mental illness. The system of mental health treatment in Muskogee County is doing really well. We have partnered with the city for quite a few years with services for juvenile drug court, services in the jails, services with adult drug court. We're one of the first judicial systems to provide opioid treatment through a drug court grant with SAMSA. And we're really proud of the collaboration we have with the city when it comes to adult services for individuals who find themselves judicially involved with a mental illness or a substance abuse. But we need to do better at stopping the problems before it reaches adulthood. 20% of children, if you look at those children that came up this morning, those beautiful children doing the pledge, 20% of children, or one out of five, have a diagnosable mental illness. So if you can imagine that group of children here leading the pledge, that every fifth child had a diagnosable mental illness. Could be ADHD, could be bipolar, but every one of them had, every one out of five has something that's diagnosable. Of those 20% with a diagnosable mental illness, only 20% receive treatment. And that's where the problem lies. We want to stop the problem before it gets to adult drug court or adult mental health court or adult veterans court for veterans with mental illnesses. We want to work together to see that our children receive the treatment that they need. On Friday, May 5th, New Horizons held the first children's mental health symposium in Muskogee County. And we invited many of our sister service provider agencies to work with getting us out of our silos and communicating together to help these children. Muskogee County has so many services that are available for children, but it seems like we put up these artificial barriers that, well, I've got to refer you here, you've got to make the phone call to get those services. So what we tried to do with this symposium was get agencies talking, get them communicating, and working on reducing barriers to better serve the children, teens, families, and adults in Muskogee County. What I wanted to tell you, just a few statistics. I told you about the 20% of children have a diagnosable mental illness, only 20% receive treatment. Those children with a diagnosable mental illness that do not receive treatment are more than likely to be reading two to three years below grade level. And we all know how important reading is. Those children with the diagnosable mental illness that aren't receiving treatment are more than likely to drop out of high school. More than likely, they're going to be involved in the judicial system. And more than likely, they're going to become those adults that don't receive treatment and wind up in our adult mental health court or adult drug court. So we want to stop it before it happens. Those adults with untreated mental illness are more likely to become unemployed or underemployed. They're more likely to use substances to treat their own mental illnesses. And part of the reason that families and adults don't receive treatment is they're afraid of the stigma associated with having a mental illness. At the symposium we had on Friday, one of the youth panel members said something that was so poignant and touching, and I wanted to share it with you. He said that if one of his friends came forward and said they had a physical illness, diabetes, or a heart condition, or cancer, all their families and friends would come and circle them and put their arms around them. If that same person said they had a mental illness, people are more than likely to take a step back. What we want to do at New Horizons is make people unafraid to say that they have a mental illness and to have the members of the community step forward and put their arms around them. So at this May Mental Health Awareness Month, I want you to think about that, wear your green bracelet to remind you of people with mental illness, remind you of the societal problems that untreated mental illness causes. And when somebody has the courage to admit they're suffering from a mental illness, take that step forward and put your arms around them. Thank you. Any questions?
No, very good point, and we do have Councilor Baker, yes.
Very good, thank you, Susan.
Oh, thank you.
What about, because I know sometimes we find ourselves answering 911 calls to respond to a situation involving someone with a mental disability. What about first responder training? Because a child with a mental disability can react completely different from a typical child.
And there is first responder training available. I know New Horizons is involved with, we call it Critical Incident Training, CIT Training, and New Horizons is involved with that. First responders are oftentimes the individuals that come to a situation initially and need to be aware that they could be facing a, somebody with a mental illness in crisis and not respond to it as somebody who is criminal. In the United States, we're one of the few places in the world where we criminalize our individuals suffering from a mental illness. If you called MYGCal, which is the state response number, they may say it could take about an hour and 40 minutes for me to get somebody out to your mental health crisis. Can you imagine if you called an ambulance for a physical crisis and they said it was going to take an hour and 40 minutes to get there? That's why we often have 911 police fire as our first responders because our mental health system in Georgia takes so long to respond to it. We don't have enough providers. The state doesn't have enough funding to answer those needs for mental health crisis. And oftentimes, it is those 911 providers. And New Horizons does provide treatment. We hear horror stories in the news about, there was an incident in South Florida where an individual with autism was with his caretaker, and he was acting, acting out. And the police officer shot and killed him because he wouldn't, wouldn't follow the instructions the officer was providing, but he didn't know how to follow the instructions. So we've got a long way to go where, when it comes to mental health treatment in our country.
What about crisis beds that are available to keep them out of, say, the jail system? Is there any crisis bed system available?
That is a problem, and we often hear from Columbus Regional about the problem because many times individuals wind up in the emergency room there. We have eight crisis beds in Muskogee County that are at the Bradley Center. Eight crisis beds to serve an eight-county area. So as you can see, we need more funding, we need more crisis beds. And it comes from talking with our, the state officials that are over, over the funding. I know that Columbus Regional is very involved, the emergency services are very involved with trying to get additional funding for resources to be allocated to this area. Oftentimes, those crisis beds are full, and somebody in a mental health crisis here in Muskogee County has to be transported out of the county, often hours away. Family can't visit them because that's the only place where there's an open bed.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you, sir.
We have Councilor Thomas.
I was interested in your remarks, seeing both Major Sweeney and Lieutenant Nguyen in the audience from the Columbus Police Department. And I know that our training division at the Columbus Police Department does some of this kind of training. I would not want our listeners to think that our first responders in Columbus have not had that training. And I don't know if Major Sweeney or Tim would have anything to say. And I don't know if Major Sweeney or Tim would have anything to say, but I do believe that we do that training. Don't we do that, Major Sweeney?
Right. We do CIS and CIT, which is, both of them are crisis response training situations.
I just didn't want to leave the impression that that's a good training, but we don't do it, because I think that we do. Do we not, Major Sweeney? For both CPD and Fire EMS? Does Fire EMS do it? I think so. Don't?
They do it. Right.
Yeah, they do it. Whether it's the forty hours, I don't know. So we'd have to ask Chief Myers the length of the training, so, but they do. Anything else, Counselor Thomas? Okay. Let's see. Counselor Barnes.
I'm really glad that Mike opened up that discussion, and I'm glad you answered, because our first responders do receive. And to getting back to the beds, and that's an area that is really crucial, because there's not enough beds.
No.
And I do know, I'm trying to think of his name, who used to, when I was at New Horizons, we used to send there to the hospitals when they, when there's a situation. I can't think of his name now.
I think it was Norman Daigle.
Norman Daigle. I know, Norman's still not doing that. He's still not.
No, sir, but we do have a hospital liaison, and the emergency room can call New Horizons.
Right, that's what I thought.
Right. But what we recommend is, at any time there's a crisis situation, that MYGCal is contacted. That's the Georgia State Response System for an emergency situation. Because we at New Horizons are not contracted to provide emergency services, and we're not contracted to provide emergency beds. We are, I want to say, we're only allowed to provide the services up to what the Department of Behavioral Health and Developmental Disabilities has contracted us to provide. And at this point in time, the Bradley Center is the one who is contracted with to provide the eight emergency crisis beds.
Could you repeat that? Because who's, who's the point of contact? Could you repeat that again?
It's called MYGCal.
Okay.
And if, I don't know the 800 number off the top of my head, but it's 1-800-MY-G-A-C-A-L. And it's for My Georgia Crisis and Access Line.
Because that is extremely important, because there are many situations that individuals need to call that number and contact.
Right. And we need to get people help before they're in a crisis situation.
You're right.
If individuals are stabilized and are receiving treatment either from New Horizons or one of the many other service providers in town, we avoid getting into a crisis situation. By that time, they're assigned a case manager that can work with the family. We want to avoid crisis.
And unfortunately, I'm glad that you brought up that topic, because really, there's not enough funding.
No, no, sir.
That, I talked to a gentleman here in Columbus who, who's dealing with autistic adults. Now, that's an area that, that really does not have that much emphasis. I think it's only two counseling. And I know that New Horizons, besides New Horizons, there's only two other counseling. But that's an area now. I mean, there's a lot for the juveniles.
Right.
But there's really not that much help.
No.
Resources for individuals who have autistic adults.
Right. Adults with autism, or adults with intellectual and developmental disabilities.
Disability, yes.
And this is something that's kind of near and dear to my heart.
I know it is.
Because when they're in the school system, when individuals experience or living with autism and ADD or in the school system, their needs are very well met.
Exactly.
But once they turn age 21, it's almost as if they become invisible members of society, and it's up to the families to provide help for them. New Horizons has worked with the Bo Bartlett Center and the Columbus Museum and the Gallery on 10th to bring art to individuals with, adults with intellectual and developmental disabilities. And we are currently working with a group called Hidden Figures to bring an autism sensory room to one of our adult service centers. Because oftentimes, individuals with autism get overstimulated and need a place where they can go and calm down, a quiet place, soft lighting, soft music, and a place to just calm down and quiet down.
But I appreciate you and all that you do at New Horizons to bring awareness. It's really a matter of awareness, particularly with the adult, the paucity of services for individuals who do have adult children with autism. That's a, that's a severe shortage in that particular area.
Right. And again, I want to leave you with the thought of, when somebody comes forward and has that bravery or inner strength to say, I'm suffering from a mental illness, step forward and put your arms around them instead of stepping back. Mental illness is not contagious.
Thank you, Susan.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you so very much. Next, we have Ms. Avis Love Lewis, also known as Mama Love, who's here to speak to us about discrimination, bullying, and veterans. Good morning, Ms. Love.
Bless me, everyone.
I should say, Ms. Lewis.
Bless me, everybody. Mama Love.
Mama Love, okay.
Bless me, everyone.
Welcome again. If you would just state your name and address.
Okay, my name is Mama Love. And I would like to share this with you first. And I would like to say, my address is Columbus, Georgia.
Okay.
For maybe a month, and then I'll move on. I want to talk about, one thing I'd like to say is the young man that spoke about the ordinance. I appreciate that. I would like to suggest, and this only a suggestion, that before you amend that ordinance, maybe you can call your, have a meeting, open meeting, for renters to come and talk to you. Because they're, me and them are the ones that live in those conditions. We know more about it. It's only a suggestion. Okay, I want to go back to the libraries. Private meetings in the library during library hours are not allowed. I hope in the future, suggestion, you take that issue up and stop it. Parking recreation. The library situation is a form of discrimination, because there's certain people allowed to have private meetings during library hours. Okay, parking recreation. I put in for one of your park, paid for it, then realized that I couldn't invite my friends, who was homeless. I couldn't, I could invite them, but I couldn't feed them. And those are my friends, because they've been homeless here for a long time. If it wasn't for the Lord, where would I be? Not only me. You never know when your day coming, when you say, if it wasn't for the Lord, where would I be? So think about when you pass along. Okay, in the park, I was told if I invite the public, I have to pay a million dollars. I don't have a million dollars. So that's discrimination, because somebody does have a million dollars and can invite the public. Think about that. Music, I was told I had to pay a fee if I have music. I don't have all that money. Some people are poor middle class. Think about the rules you pass. You never know when you may be in that boat, too. Just think about it. Pray about it. Let God lead you. Okay, feeding in the park, I was told about that. But I done been to park, I done seen events, and I done seen people feed in the park. Is that discrimination? Is it just for certain people? Think about that. When I went to court about that 1720 41st Street. Okay, y'all closed that case. You closed that case. But you took me to court about that case. Why are you closing a case when you done had code and inspection come out, inspect that building, and determine that that building got problems in it that they tell them they have to correct within 45 days? That was in October. Forty-five days been over. And now I'm being told my case is closed. I want you to go back and look at that case, reopen it. Suggestion, fix it so these cases would not be closed until code and inspection. What they deem necessary to be fixed, is fixed. Change that. Change it. Another thing I want to talk about, I'm a veteran. I'm leaving Columbus, Georgia, because I done been many places, many, many states. God let me. God protected me. And I have not, that's my five minutes.
That's your five-minute warning. So we're going to reset you another five minutes.
I have not had to pay as much for my contract in Nell State as I have here in Georgia. I have been given benefits of the states that I can't even get in Georgia. I'm not the only one leaving. I talk to lots of people. I love to talk. And I know other veterans have left. I've been told by the family member, why they left. Take a look at that. Just a suggestion. Take a look at that. Another thing, okay, I talked about the meeting with the renters. Like I said, that's just a suggestion before you go do an amendment, because you might not know, you might not have lived in that condition, but who knows? One day, it might be you, or it might be your loved one. So look at it before you do thing. Reopen 1720 41st Street, please. When I went to court, okay, where I lived before, I know people that went to court. And I've been with them people as a support. We was able to go back after that court case, pay for a copy of that court, everything that happened in that court, we was able to pay and get a copy of it. That didn't happen here in Georgia. When I went back to pay for it, they told me it was no such thing. When you dealing with people's lives, putting them out of the house, taking favor, and this might say, favoring the real estate people here, throwing people out, and that person can't even go and pay for a copy of the court case because you don't do it, other state do it. Suggestion. Look at it. Find out why. Find out why. Okay, I would like to thank the police department. I said good things to, I don't just complain, and it's not really complaining. God put us on earth to do His work with His hands, with His mouth, with His feet. I'm not only complaining, I got specs in my eye, so I can't afford to complain. I'm just making suggestion. Wherever He put us, we supposed to work for Him, we supposed to try to make things better. Like I said, I'm leaving, but I got to give in count of Almighty Father, what I done seen happen here, so I'm going to speak out. But like I said, I'm not speaking because of me, because like I said, I'm leaving. But I saw it, and I'm going to tell it. Think about, one day, it may be you. One day, it may be your loved ones. God want us to make things better. People says silent is golden. Mama Love said silence is a coward, because God want us to do His work. Okay? Another problem I hate, I called my representatives for three months straight to get help. Three months straight. I haven't got a phone call back yet. Somebody gave me that number because I was sleeping and God's come. I called that number for three months straight. That person never, never, still haven't called me back. If you own some kind of position, if you say you representing the people, communicate with her. Return a phone call. I shouldn't have had to call no three months, and still ain't got no answer. Ain't got no return phone call. Think about it. God see everything we do. One day, He gonna open that book, and some of us gonna be surprised when He said, deploy for me, I know they not. Communicate. All I want to say is, like I said, I do thank the police, because I like when they do wellness check. I liked it. Change the Veterans Day back to November 11th. We gave a lot for y'all. You may think I'm whole, but only God carry me a lot. He carry me. That's my 10 minutes.
That's it.
Okay. Thank y'all.
Thank you.
I'm going to leave you with this.
Okay.
I'm going to leave you with this. I'm not trying to complain, I'm just making constructive suggestions.
Okay. Well, thank you so much. We appreciate you being here, and thank you for your service.
Thank you.
All right. Next, we have Justin Krieg, who's representing the Historic Columbus Foundation. He'd like to speak to us about Claflin School redevelopment. Good morning.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Counsel, good to see you all. I'm Justin Krieg, 620 Front Avenue. I'm here representing Historic Columbus and speaking in favor of the Claflin redevelopment project. Historic Columbus has been involved, at least through attending meetings and continual updates through Reverend Jesse with the progression of the Friends of Historic Claflin Group and their progress on the school building. And I'm here today to urge you all to support this redevelopment plan that has been presented, and I think is going to be up for discussion later in the meeting. I know that there are some, I guess probably somewhat complicated lease agreements and deed restrictions and things like that that need to be complied with. But it's the opinion of our organization that if this redevelopment does not go through at this time, that the building may very likely fall under a demolition by neglect. The property is in very dire straits. The roof is continuing to leak, and as we continue to get spring and summer rains, the interior of the building will continue to deteriorate to a point where it won't make sense for anybody to come in and save that structure. I can personally attest to Reverend Jesse's countless hours and efforts of Friends of Historic Claflin in getting the, kind of that grassroots effort off the ground. They not only nominated the property successfully to the National Register of Historic Places, it was also listed with the Georgia Trust this past year as one of their 10 places in peril sites across the state. And they have also written and been awarded a couple grants that have gone towards helping with the environmental assessment of the building. So I just wanted to come before you all today, and I believe Deputy City Manager Pam Hodge has distributed a letter of support formally from our organization through email, probably late last, late last week. But just know that Historic Columbus Foundation supports Reverend Jesse and Celadon or Oracle Development Group in the redevelopment of this site into a senior housing or low-income housing development site with an educational component. And that's all I have.
All right. Well, thank you very much, and thank you for what you and Historic Columbus do for our community. We appreciate that. Next, we have Ms. Susan Haycock, who would like to speak to us about parks and recreation. Good morning.
Good morning, everyone. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak for a few moments. And I'd also like to thank Councilman Barnes for inviting me to talk this morning.
Oh, we do know your name and address.
I'm Susan Haycock, and I live on Bondale Drive in Sears Woods.
Great.
I would like to give kudos, attaboys, to Parks and Rec. That's why I'm here this morning. But I need to give you a background story before I get to what has happened with the Parks and Rec. In July of 2015, my husband and I and my son In July of two thousand fifteen, my husband and I and my son moved to Bondale Drive, which is in Sears Woods. Our house actually backs up to Cooper Creek Park and we have the most beautiful view, I believe, in the entire neighborhood. We can see the lake, we can see all the trees, it is just absolutely gorgeous. Over the past two years, along with that, I have noticed at night, you can see where I'm going with this, there are various incendiary things that happen in a park at night, of which I have been colorfully educated on the goings-on in a park at night. Our house in particular backs up to concrete picnic tables, a gravel parking lot, Pavilion Five, and a yellow gate that closes half of the park at a certain time at night. So for the past couple of years since we've lived there, I've noticed cars that come and go all night, other activity that goes on. The gate that is halfway in the park does not stop people from going to the very end of the park through the drive. Just because there was a gate that closed off the drive, people were still able to take their cars and drive down the walking trails on either side and get back into the park. So I guess for the past six months, I've been trying to come up with a solution. There has to be a solution because I can't sit up all night long watching what's going on and waiting, you know, for something to happen so that I could call the police. So driving through the park, you know, on the weekends, just, you know, to get out and get fresh air, I came up with this idea that wouldn't it be great if that gate that was basically all the way into the park, if that gate was not moved up closer? And if it was moved closer, what would be the best place to put it in order to really stop people from driving in all hours of the night? So I decided that possibly, and I don't know if you're familiar with the layout of Cooper Creek Park, but there is a little bridge that you can cross over and there's water, of course, on either side. And I thought if there was a gate that was put right here, then certainly no one would be able to drive around because of the water. On April the seventeenth, I met with the Parks and Rec Director, Ms. Holly Broder, and Councilman Barnes was there as well. And honestly, when I met with her, I thought, if anything, I'm hoping that we can have an open dialogue, just so that she knows that there are activities, you know, that are happening throughout the night, you know, every night. I also went with a proposal of, through Google Maps, I was able to collect pictures of the area and the proposed area of where I thought that the gate needed to be moved. And I brought this with me as a long shot. I thought certainly in the grand scheme of what goes on in this city, there are bigger fish to fry than my issues with all of this that's going on in the park. And like I said, I had hoped that we would just at least have an open, ongoing dialogue about the situation. Well, after the meeting, and I showed her the pictures, after the meeting, she actually went directly to the park from the meeting, looked at the current gate and where it was located, looked at where I had proposed for the gate to be. That afternoon, she ordered the parts to change the gate and in like four days, the gate was moved.
That's just your five-minute warning.
And I was just so overwhelmed with surprise and excitement and could not believe that it had not just sat on someone's desk, which, you know, is kind of what I thought, you know, this is probably really no big deal to her. But for her to expedite this matter so quickly, it was just really unbelievable and I was just so thrilled. So once the gate was put in at the new location, I did watch, usually sheriffs come through anywhere between nine and ten to close the gate. And the gate that was previously out is, like I said, right behind my house, so I can see when they come and they go to lock that. So I watched for several days just to kind of, you know, make sure things were moving along the way that they should and that the, you know, the new gate was being used. Some days, the old gate was continuing to be closed, some days I could tell that the new gate was up further was continuing to be closed. I could tell because I could still see cars coming into the parking lot when the new gate was not closed. So I decided, well, I need to let Ms. Broder know, you know, what's going on and how things are moving along with this progress that she so quickly moved along. So one night, I did notice that the gate, the old gate previously had been closed because there were people behind my house in their cars. And so I sent her an email about nine o'clock at night, and it was a Sunday night, and I said, this is what I have witnessed over the past, you know, four or five days. These nights it's closed, these nights, the old one's closed. Tonight, it happens to be that the old gate is the one that's closed. I figured a learning curve, you know, it takes a while for everybody to get the memo on what to do. So this was nine o'clock on a Sunday night. At nine-thirty, she writes me back that night. She reads, I guess she reads her emails all night, and she said, it will be taken care of. Fifteen to twenty minutes after that, the sheriff comes through, runs everybody off, and that was the end of that. So I just have just been so amazed at how quickly she has expedited things and taken things seriously and listened and handled requests. And I just wanted to bring that to your attention because it's just unbelievable that someone just jumped right on something.
Well, Ms. Haycock, thank you for coming down and sharing that with us. You know, often we hear things that don't go a hundred percent right, and so it's very nice to hear that our staff was responsive to you.
Very, very.
And of course, that is our objective, is when citizens calls to try to find the solution. And, you know, I once heard a service mantra that was, I shall never say no to a customer or stakeholder, I will always try to find an alternative, an acceptable alternative. And so I, many, most, if not all of our employees have that ethic. And so in this instance, we see that demonstrated. So thank you so much. And I want to turn it over to Pops Barnes, he has a comment as well.
Yeah, I asked Susan to come down here because you want, I think, prior to the meeting, when I met with you and with Sharon, that I'd say that if anything could be done, it would be. I've worked many times with Holly, even when she was not in a position as she currently is now, always has been proactive. I've called on Sundays in her old position when I noticed something and it was taken care of quickly. But also, I mentioned to you that that is pretty much, to piggyback off what the mayor said, pretty much with the, this government, I like to see this government work, I like to see individuals like yourself and Sharon and the young lady is going to be the new president of the Sears Woods. There's nothing like citizen participation. Loved it when mother love comes down and I love this, I love when individuals come because we don't know everything. You had a very viable solution when we talked, I think it was that previous week. I did go and take a look there and it seems like it would work. I did not know if it was possible, but I know if it was possible to happen, we could do it. So that goes to show you what citizen participation, coming down here on the public agenda, those are pluses. And Holly, when we met with Holly and with Becky, and I know you were surprised, and I did hear, would you quote what you mentioned when you said, when we got up on the table, you heard her do what on the telephone, when she called?
Oh, she expedited everything.
Yeah, she called right then and had that done. So yeah, it's a, it's a big, I mentioned it to Isaiah, but I just thought it was important for Susan to come down and so that the people in our viewing could see that this government is spontaneous in doing something if something can be done and give Holly and Becky them a.
Thank you all so much for what you do, Holly and her team, and thank you for coming down and sharing that with us. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right. And next, on Public Agenda, we have Ms. Sharon Barreth that would like to share with us a public park concern. Good morning.
Good morning. And I'm Sharon Barreth. And to back up Susan's story a little bit, I also live on Bondale Court backing up to that park. So at night, when people come into the park, their lights are coming in my sunroom window. So I could see traffic in and out all night. And Pops knows, a few months ago, I called the police around midnight, and I'm getting into my time in this and my subject, but the police came and I walked back to my fence so they would know where I'd called from. It sounded like a lot of kids back there, it was noisy, it was after midnight. After I made a few trips in and out to and from my back gate, all of a sudden, the officer was standing in front of me, he wanted to come in my backyard just to check if, see if anybody was back there. I said, oh, no, they didn't come over my fence. And about that time, I unlocked the gate so he could come in and he pulled his gun and said, get your hands up. And I mean, it was right beside me. There was someone in the bushes in my backyard that had been there all that time that I was going in and out, talking with the police, getting them to come and check. So, you know, there's just, nobody needs to be in that park after dark. There's some bad things that have gone on. But anyway, I thank you because as we left that meeting, Holly's phone rang and I heard her say, yes, I can meet you at the entrance to Sears Woods or to Cooper Creek Park in thirty minutes. And that afternoon, we had the rest of the story as Susan told you. Now, I have some things, I got them mixed up. Sure, sure, thank you. If that's enough. And I thank you again for letting me come. I was born and raised in this beautiful river town and I'm real proud to be here. My children chose to stay here and raise their families here. So it's my home and I care about it. I started this crusade about four years ago and many of you have gotten letters from me in the past, and I apologize for my allergy-horseness, but about smoking in the park. And I even wrote a little note to the newspaper one day about why do children of soccer play or, you know, children who play soccer have more value than children who play baseball? Because when you walk up to, the first notice you see is what you see as you come on to your campus here. These are the signs that you have for no smoking on this whole campus. That's the library, the swimming facility, this building, there is no smoking allowed on this campus. If you drive up to Britt David Park is the one we are usually affiliated with, you see the top of the second page is missing the no pets, but smoking prohibited at city parks and rec facilities, on the playing fields, in the dugouts, and within twenty-five feet of the bleachers are permanently affixed seats. Well, I approached several times, and I'm always nice about it, but I go up to people and I'll say, you know you're not supposed to be smoking in here. And I just kind of mentioned that they've been observed smoking. And I had a lady, one day, I went up to the parking lot at Britt David to get a jacket halfway through the game and she's walking along puffing and she said, you just don't know who you're messing with. And I'm like, really? Are you threatening me? I mean, I was just, couldn't believe her attitude, her demeanor. I talked to two men a few weeks ago, they were coaches, they were standing right behind the bleachers. And I said, y'all aren't supposed to be smoking here, you of all people know better. They said to me, these ain't permanent seats. These bleachers can be picked up and moved. And I was like, really? The other day, I saw a gentleman as I was walking in, because the parks, the fields sit lower than the parking areas. So when you walk in, it hits you as you come in that back gate. I said, you're not supposed to smoke down here. And he said, you ain't my mama. I said, no, and thank you for that. But I finally, that was the one person that I got a little bit testy with. I said, you know, for years I worked in a doctor's office, we had a saying in the office, you can't fight ignorance and disease simultaneously. And he just looked at me, I'm not sure he even knew what it meant. But I am so fed up with the smoking and it would be so easy to put signs like you have when you drive into this facility at all of these parks, not just Britt David, not just the soccer fields. When I talked to Dr. Warsley about this, a year or two ago, he came out and some of you probably have this brown-looking page, he put those on the concession stand, about one all the way around, and it's about this big. I'm not sure how many people even see it, but it hadn't solved anything either. When you drive up to the soccer field, that's where the last page in your handout was printed from. It says, no tobacco products. There's no question, no smoking. At the opening ceremonies, my daughter had a lady in front of her, and she sat there with her child who has asthma, and she's smoking one of those e-cigarettes. And my daughter said, ma'am, you're not supposed to be smoking in here. She said, this isn't a real cigarette. So that is my concern. And to me, I've been battling this, my oldest child is fourteen, he started, or grandchild, he started playing at Britt David when he was five or six. So I've been battling this for that many years. I've talked to different people on the council. Real quick, I hope my time doesn't run out, I'm going to read you what my husband wrote, I think to the mayor and a number of you. City ordinance, smoking continues to be a problem throughout the city. At the Pioneer Little League, a number of parents have almost come to blows over the issue of smokers smoking within twenty-five feet of the seats and dugouts. At Woodrow Farms, the referees smoke outside of the main gate, making athletes and spectators walk through their smoke cloud. Only twenty-five feet is not a barrier that prohibits secondhand smoke from entering the lungs of children. People with respiratory illnesses or asthma, or from people who just think smoking stinks. The ordinance for September, section thirteen oh-two, smoking at city parks and rec facilities, in addition to no smoking areas designated by ordinance or by the city manager, the smoking of tobacco in any form during regularly scheduled games is prohibited on playing fields, in dugouts, and within twenty-five feet of bleachers or permanent seats located at the city park and rec facility. The city manager shall be authorized to designate smoking areas in city parks. This ordinance is very vague. Police officers are called to enforce it, but they don't even know where the smoking area is supposed to be. I've called the police a few times and the last time I called them, we were there for two hours for the game, they never even showed up. And I know they're busy, my husband's former law enforcement, so I know that's not a priority call. But these folks have been advised and asked not to smoke and they just don't get it. So to me, if we could have a sign at all of our parks So to me, if we could have a sign at all of our parks and recreation facilities, not in the facility, but as you turn into the parking gate, parking, parking areas, if we could have a sign like our city leaders are privileged to have, I think that would solve most of the problems. And you would at least have an ordinance that can be enforced instead of somebody saying, "Well, this is more than 25 feet." It, it's just not.
Right. Well, thank you so much for that. I'd like for our staff to give you a little update on where we are. Council is considering various ordinances that might affect this, and also, there's been a city manager administrative policy. Lucy, would anybody like to, or Lisa, Lucy, you want to bring us up to date on where we are on this issue?
All right. We do have a proposed smoke-free ordinance, which will be back for first reading again at the next meeting on May 23. It would make the public park ordinance a little more pervasive and clear than this particular ordinance does. And another thing is it would also deal with the non-tobacco smoking products.
Okay. Thank you. And I think we also are working on getting signs everywhere. So that is, that is a, a funding and just mechanics problem, but we're clicking them off, you know, as we can. Lisa, did you want to speak about that effort?
Well, just wanted to mention that, yeah, definitely, we're going to be looking at the same type signage that you have just shown that's around this facility. We're going to be looking at placing it the other areas, other buildings, and of course, our parks as well. But again, it's going to be a progressive thing because of funding.
Right. So we're actively working the issue.
So how long, I mean, can we expect?
Well, once the May 23 issue comes up on the smoking, we'll see where that goes, and then we can kind of get started after that. So it will not be long, I mean, within, you know, the next 30 days or so.
Okay. Because I'm, I guess I'm just not real confident that's going to pass. I think it's a real mixed bag with people. But to me, you could stop it in the parks, just like you've stopped it here. So did everybody, I have a few more of these. Does anybody else need copies?
We've got them, and you can give one to the clerk. Counselor Henderson.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Ms. Barreth, for, for bringing this back up. Yeah, I would like to make sure that we don't let the parks piece get lost in the larger ordinance, because there's still been a lot of discussion about what form that ordinance should take as it passes, and I don't want this to get dragged on. And, and my biggest concern is, I, I think what we've done by trying to describe areas and different pockets within these parks where people can take on tobacco products, we're putting leagues in the same position we talked about, putting some bar owners, and that is, they have to enforce it. They have to go in there and try, because you're not going to get a police officer to respond on a Saturday afternoon to come kick a smoker out of a little league. But if you just make it a blanket, not inside the park, then it becomes much easier. And I would also urge us to communicate with the leagues themselves so that they can disseminate information to all these parents and make sure they understand the law has changed or it's been, been, been made a little bit more stringent in order to try to, try to make it easier for them to enforce it within their league itself. So, so thank you.
Thank you for.
And we have Counselor Allen.
Well, I was just going to ask the same, on the same lines, Counsel Henderson, and we, we, on the sign, it says, "Within 25 feet of fixed," and are we looking at expanding that to no parking, no parking, no smoking at all?
Based on the.
You're talking about the overall smoking, non-smoking ordinance, right?
But I'm worried about if, you know, why, if you can have this here today without that ordinance being passed, why can't we have these? You'll give me the signs, I'll go put them up at our park, and I'll put them up at Cooper Creek. But people, it, it needs, it needs to be something that can be enforced, because when, like I said, when the police come out, they're kind of looking around like, "Where are the designated smoking areas?" You know, to me, the ballpark where the, where the kids play is fenced in. The field is totally fenced in. So if, if my grandson, as he did the other night, hits a homerun, the ball goes just the other side of that fence. But to me, the kids are on that whole field. But they think if they go down here and sit just outside that fence on the hill, that it's okay to sit there and smoke. Well, that, that doesn't keep the smoke away from the kids and the adults like me that have, have asthma as well. So I just think this would be such an easy fix. And I guess I'm, I'm just a little confused as to why you can have this here and we can't have it at the ballfields and parks. Whether it goes through as a whole city or not is, is up to question. But to me, there's no question here. Why can't we get these signs up immediately?
That, that is being done. And so we're not waiting on the ordinance for that. That's being done and is only limited by money and, and resources. So we're, we're getting that done. But I think what Lucy was saying is that it will have even more oomph once this passes.
Oh, sure.
So Lucy, did you want to speak, add something?
Right. Well, actually, I was going to speak about this property and the sign you identified for it. There, the city manager also has additional regulation authority as a, through the workplace policy, which is cited. In other words, he is keeping it a totally smoke-free campus for the employees who work here. So that's another justification beyond the ordinance.
Mayor, could I finish my thought here? I wanted to ask city attorney if, do we need to amend the ordinance to move us away from a specific fixed seating? Is that in a park? Does, do we need to amend the ordinance to change that so that it's no smoking in the park permanently?
Yes, you could certainly choose to do that as.
Would you bring that change next, the council meeting?
So you would want no smoking anywhere in a designated city park?
Right, right.
We can do that. It could also be part of the smoke-free ordinance, but it can be brought separately certainly anytime.
So can that include the parking lot?
But if, the parking lot is a part of the park.
That's my, because if you just say, "Near fixed seating," they don't get it.
All right. We have Counselor Baker.
Madam City Attorney, the, the language on this front page cites a state code rather than our locals.
Right.
Would you explain the, the difference there?
Well, it's generally citing the state smoke-free laws, which talk about certain public areas where there's no smoking. Then it goes on to cite the workplace policy. In other words, under the state law, there would be able to be designated no smoking areas, but the city manager has chosen not to have those anymore through the workplace policy.
Could we ban this to the parks under this same code section, or?
No. This state law addresses buildings, interior of buildings more than outside areas.
Okay.
So, yes.
Okay. All right. Is that good, Counselor Baker? Okay. Mayor Protim?
So, City Attorney, there's nothing in the state laws that addresses parks at all?
That, right. We would be free to address it, but it is not addressed by state, state law.
Okay.
All right. Well, thank you very much. We appreciate your interest in this important subject. Wait, we've got Counselor Barnes.
Oh, just so I have a understanding, so what you're going to bring is going to be specific to the parks, is that correct?
I.
Yeah, that should be the fix for it. Okay.
And that will be all city parks?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. And thank you all for your service to our community.
That concludes our public agenda, and now we head into the city managers, managers' agenda, and we have Deputy City Manager Lisa Goodwin with us this morning.
Good morning. Good morning. The first thing that we have on the agenda is the redevelopment proposal for Claflin School. And before we get into this, I'm going to call on Laura Johnson to come in to make some remarks regarding this before we call for an approval. And I, I do want to thank Laura for working with, for Lucy, our Assistant City Attorney, and Jacob Beal, who drafted the language for this memorandum, this MOU. So with that, Laura, thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I just wanted to briefly go over the requests for revisions to the lease, lease agreement that we're asking for council's approval on. We'd like to change the scope of the project to include the conversion of the school into 44 plus or minus units of affordable housing, with a portion of that school to remain set aside for educational programs and to display the school's history. We also would like to allow Friends of Historic Claflin to enter into an agreement with the developer, Oracle Housing, to carry out the redevelopment utilizing low-income housing tax credits and historic tax credits, with the terms being approved by the city. We're asking the developer to confirm that the previous MOA with Friends of Historic Claflin that was signed on February 8, 2017, no longer be in any force or effect. The developer will assume full financial responsibility for any loss it incurs as a result of any expenditures it makes for the benefit of the project in the event the project does not move forward. We're asking the current lease agreement between the city and Friends of Historic Claflin be extended to 45 years due to the requirements of the tax credit program. We're going to end the lease agreement. Friends of Historic Claflin will be required to submit, submit annual audits prepared by CPA, financial statements, tax returns, and an outline of its educational programming on an annual basis to the city. The amended lease will also contain a mechanism for replacing the current nonprofit with another nonprofit or governmental agency in the event that the nonprofit is noncompliant with terms of the lease. We will come to city council and update annually, and do an update annually, annually on this project. And only pre-development work, no construction, will take place on the building until the deed restriction is lifted. Also, we are asking that a requirement be made, that the new agreement between Friends of Historic Claflin and the developer have, be restricted, that the money that they make off of the developer fees be restricted to programming activities only, and that they cannot use that funding for administration. So a, a quick update since the last time we presented to you. I have been in contact with the Office of Government-Wide Policy, the Real Property Division, and are researching the process for getting the deed restriction lifted at the federal level. I did want to comment that I just spoke with them 30 minutes on, 30 minutes ago on the phone, and feel pretty confident that this will happen. The lady I spoke with stated that she knows that the federal government does not want this property back. She also stated that the process for it would be for them to review the packet that I've submitted to her, and if they feel like they're okay with moving forward, that they just send, they work with their attorney to have it released, so that their attorney would prepare a release. The mayor did sign a letter that was sent to Congressman Sanford Bishop requesting his assistance in getting the deed restriction lifted as well. And the Claflin Project has received several support letters, or a couple, from Historic Columbus and the Georgia Trust for Historic Preservation. And if y'all have any questions.
Yes, we do have several. We have, first, Mayor Protim.
Ms. Johnson, on this section that you talked about restricting the use of the funds that will come from the developer to Friends of Claflin.
Mm-hmm.
The only other thing I would hope that we can have in there somewhere, and, and the, the developer may be covering, that the funds could also be used for maintenance of the building.
The.
The educational part of it.
Mm-hmm. Would that do something to the developer? Could you address that?
I, I just want to clarify the, so that we're all on the same page. The, the money that we're talking about being directed to educational purposes only would be the funds that we are agreeing to give to Friends of Historic Claflin, which is a very small part of the overall project. The rest of the developer fees, we're expecting that we will get those. I just want to make sure that's clear. And then in terms of the maintenance of the property, that's, that's our responsibility as a, as responsible owner, and that has been budgeted for, and will be budgeted for, for the foreseeable future to maintain and operate the facility in a first-class manner. So that, that will be done with our money, but not the money that's directed to the Friends of Historic Claflin.
And that's the total property?
I'm sorry?
That's the whole piece of the property?
Correct, the whole property.
Okay.
Okay. Let me, first of all, sir, if you would just state your name for the record, so.
Oh, apologies. Scott Henry, and the Director of Acquisitions for Oracle.
Okay. Tell me about the money going to Cla, Friends of Claflin. Maybe I, I've misunderstood that in some way. What's that for?
So we, we agreed to, we, we recognize that the Friends of Historic Claflin, you know, they're, they're trying to do a good thing. They've been, they've invested a lot of time with this property and saving the property. We, they would continue to fill a supportive role for us while we're, we're in control and we're taking the lead and we're doing all the things we're supposed to be doing. They are also on the ground here. And we, in, in a gesture of good faith, we, we were fine with giving them a very small part of the cash flow, basically 5% as a gesture of goodwill for what they're doing.
I'm not sure I, I was aware of that, Laura. Is that in the, because they're not even a 501(c)(3). So how's the city partner with a private developer to give an entity that's not a 501(c)(3) money? And what, what are they doing for the money?
We, um, this was part of that original MOA that will no longer be in existence that was signed on February 8 between the developer and Claflin. It just stated in the MOA that they would provide 5% to Claflin. We're wanting to put an additional restriction on that because Oracle's going to be entering into, into a new agreement with Claflin. So that other one's going to be voided, and they're going to enter into a new one. So we're asking that that new agreement that they enter into, that, if they're still going to, give them developer fees, we're asking that those developer fees be restricted to only be able to use them for programming where they, where they're not able to use them for the administration.
Who's auditing that? Who's keeping track of that?
Yeah, we, we will be, um, we are requiring now, as per, per the new lease, if, you know, if everything's approved, that they provide us annual audits that are going to be completed by a CPA. We're requiring them annually to provide us financial statements as well, and a list of all of their programs that they plan to hold in the facility on an annual basis. So annually, we'll be doing the monitoring internally on the nonprofit aspect of the programs.
And they, and my understanding was, just from a meeting yesterday, that they don't have their 501(c)(3) yet?
Now, I looked it up on the Secretary of State's website, and I did see him listed as active. But if something's happened from the time I looked till now, I'm not sure. But the IRS, I have not been able to locate him on the IRS.
One's the federal government, one's the state government.
Okay.
And so the state government, I, I could send something up today and be incorporated by 5:00 p.m., but as a nonprofit.
Right.
But, but an IRS is going to take a lot longer, and if it's not, you know, if, if it's not a 501(c)(3) and the city's entering into this partnership and a private developer is sending money to a non-501(c)(3) organization, and we're auditing it and overseeing it, I get nervous.
Well, we, I mean, I would think that them having that designation would be part of the requirements for them to stay in this partnership. We could possibly give them a, a certain amount of time to get it, but that could be one of the reasons that we would remove them as a nonprofit if they're unable to get that 501(c)(3) designation.
I thought that they, yes, ma'am, I see. I thought that they had two years to get it, right? And, and so it's been two years. So anyway, I just, you know, it's not my decision, it's council's decision, obviously, and we've got folks lined up, so I'm going to turn it over to them. But I have to say that that's, that item, I thought, had been changed.
Yeah.
So that the money came to the city, any money's come to the city and not to a private entity that we don't control.
Right. Right.
And because we're taking on the responsibility to the taxpayers of answering for this, and we don't control that entity, and they don't even have federal designation.
Okay.
So, you know, you know, anyway, so, yes, ma'am?
I think she's showing the Friends of Claphlin.
Yes. Yes, ma'am. We do have a lot of councilors up. Did you want to address the 501(c)(3) or?
I'm sorry, are you talking about the Friends of Claphlin 501(c)(3)?
You'll have to come up to the podium. Yes. If you would just state your name. Mayor Proten wanted you to speak to the 501(c)(3) aspect of Claphlin.
I'm sorry, I'm Teresa Hart Williams, and Reverend Jesse is at Claphlin with some people who are doing completing the testing, and he got hung up. But we've had 501(c)(3), I'm the secretary, and we've we've got it. Are you talking about 501(c)(3) for Friends of Claphlin?
Ma'am, Pam, can you clear this up? Maybe I misunderstand. If so, I apologize. Pam, please tell me about the report yesterday about the 501(c)(3) so we can get on the same page.
Right. They do have their exemption, but what they haven't provided to us was their Form 990 to show that they have filed their annual report with IRS.
Okay.
That's the portion that we don't have yet.
Okay, all right. So, they are a 501(c)(3), so that concern is, all right, and but nevertheless, we will be auditing and overseeing a nonprofit entity's use of money. Okay. All right. We've got councilors lined up. Counselor Henderson.
Thank you, Mayor. And this is really on a similar but separate subject. I don't want this discussion to sound critical of anybody, because it's not. Frankly, Friends of Claphlin, Claphlin has done an amazing job in trying to promote the facility and trying to generate some excitement, and I think that's what led to this opportunity. My question was more from a technical standpoint from the cities, and that is about the necessity for a nonprofit to be almost an intermediary in a contractual obligation between a developer and a city on city-owned property. I see a huge role for Friends of Claphlin going forward from a programming standpoint and an advisory perspective with regards to any educational piece that is is remaining in the project. But I think, I may be mistaken, but I think that even that is sort of undefined at this point until you get in and start start really really looking at it. So, I think there's a very big role for that organization to play, especially as passionate as they've been about saving saving the facility. So, it's a long way to ask this question. Is it, are we better served to communicate directly with Oracle from the city's perspective with regards to the lease, and maybe create a second MOU in terms of programming and the utility of an educational function as an adjunct to what they're doing, not as an integral piece to what they're doing? I'm looking for guidance from the two of y'all.
Well, there, I'm fine with that, and there's nothing wrong with creating a letter of understanding that we'll work together in good faith. I mean, we would prefer that.
Laura, I mean, what's the preference here? I mean, if, because I know there's a lot of questions, because this is basically one big contingency contract, contingent on the deed being removed, contingent upon the tax credit financing being approved. So, there's there's still a, at least a fifty-fifty chance this does not materialize this year. So, to keep the process clean and the communication as neat as possible, what is the best route to take in your estimation?
Well, I mean, I believe what you're saying is, you know, would be a good route to take, but I would want Lucy or Jacob to try to address that, just so I know on a legal standpoint, that's something that we would be able to do. I believe Jacob's here. Jacob, can you come and address that?
Good morning, Jacob. Just state your name if you would.
Jacob Beal. Counselor Henderson, I think the issue is how this started. This started as an effort on the part of Friends of Claphlin with the city, and in that regard, we entered into a lease with them. If, in fact, this is going to change directions, and the city feels more comfortable dealing directly with the developer, then it may well be that we have to do away with the existing lease and enter into a new arrangement with Oracle and allow Claphlin its particular relationship in another direction with Oracle and the city. So, the problem has come, it's not so much a problem, but it's the fact that we've changed directions from the way this originally was oriented in regard to the fact that we have a lease allowing Friends of Claphlin to redevelop that place, and that lease has certain deadlines to meet on the part of Claphlin, Friends of Claphlin, and now we've changed directions. So, I think it might be appropriate to step back and take a look at where this is going and to sort through the legal relationships of Claphlin, Oracle, and the city. I don't know if that answered your question.
No, it 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 sort of, it confirms my thinking in that this has been an incredible effort on the part of Friends of Claphlin, and it's been an uphill struggle for them all the way, and they've stayed the course, and they identified an opportunity to be able to preserve that building, which has a lot of historical significance in this community, and we want to do. I would like to see anything that we can do be done to try to try to preserve that, particularly in a, from the perspective of adding to an area of the community that I think will really benefit. I just get a little concerned because it has changed, and because we've we've got a very short window, if this is going to work at all. I am much more confident at this stage if we are the primary contact for Oracle, and we do not, not to cut Friends of Claphlin out, they're still a vital component that I think only they can provide. But I think to try to, if we're going to try to get this navigated in a short period of time, I think it's almost essential, in my opinion, that that the city be the be the primary conduit for the for the contract. So, I mean, that's that's in the, that's from from sort of a statement and also a question. Is that doable? I mean, how difficult is it to get it done? Are Friends of Claphlin on board with that process to try to get this thing pushed through? So, there's a lot of, I think, other questions that are that are popping up around that. I'll yield to other councilors.
Can I add something?
Yes.
That sounds great. The only concern I obviously have is going that route, sounds like it might prohibit us from moving forward to a May twenty-fifth deadline for our application. I want to understand if we change the lease, there's an RFP process. I like the idea that you've raised, as long as it's more of a a letter of understanding that, you know, we're going to work together and talk directly in good faith, but leave the existing lease in place.
I don't know if that can be done from a legal perspective. Lucy, Jacob, do either one of y'all have a?
Lucy?
Yes, I think, as you pointed out, the tax credit deadline of the twenty-fourth of May can only be met if we continue on this course, because there would be legal requirements to comply with if we change direction, such as, you know, re-RFPing in what is now an entirely different type project than what Claphlin was awarded. And also, you know, they are still within their time, one of their timeframes to meet deadlines under the contract, which has not elapsed yet.
Thank you.
Okay. We've got Counselor Allen.
Thank you, Mayor. I guess I'd just kind of like to clarify, one, we have a letter to Congressman Bishop trying to, I guess, ask the federal government to change the deed restriction. And what will that do?
Well, that will obviously make it very clear that people can start into the project without risk, as opposed to taking a risk, as Oracle has been willing to do here. And it probably will still require some educational component. If the restriction is totally released by the federal government, council could still choose to make an educational component required of a part of.
Clarify what the deed restriction is first.
Deed restriction is that it be used for educational purposes.
No, 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 no.
School.
The deed restriction is that.
It be used only as a public school.
Okay.
That's what the deed says.
Right. But there have been cases interpreting since then that that could be educational purposes as long as instruction was going on.
Counselor Thomas, if you re-up yourself, I had turned on your speaker. Go ahead, Counselor Allen.
I guess I just want to kind of find out where we're going here. I'm all in favor of trying to salvage the building, but it concerns me greatly that we're going to allow a board, I guess, an oversight board, to receive compensation from Oracle, when in fact, the agreement should be between the city and Oracle, and the city should be receiving whatever the amount of money is. We, I don't understand, I don't think we have any other board in this type situation that receives compensation. I know there are some boards that are compensated because of their expertise, that I think the Board of Elections and the Board of Zoning Appeals and the Board of Equalization are compensated. But that's different than this situation. I'm not an attorney, but I think this whole process needs to be legalized, and if that means delaying it till the next filing process, we miss the twenty-fifth, then I think we need to do it right, and I'm sorry, we just missed the twenty-fifth. But this needs to be done properly. We need to make sure that Congressman Bishop has everything he needs to be able to, for the federal government to do what they need to do. But for us to move forward on a hope and a prayer and a whim and a promise, it just doesn't, I'm very uncomfortable with this. So, I'd like for us to to move in the right direction, do it for the right reasons, and set it up legally.
As to the specific issue with the board compensation, the new memorandum of agreement, which would have to be drawn up, and the resolution reserves the city the ability to approve the form of that agreement, the compensation, I mean, the developer payment could be restricted to programming only. I mean, there would be ways of.
But that's getting around what I just said my concern was, and that's not what I want to do. The board should not be receiving any compensation from Oracle. No offense to the board or those Friends of Claphlin, but that's not the way the city is structured, and that's not the way we operate. If 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 the city wants to develop, go in with Oracle and develop this facility and put education in there, put the living arrangements in there, that's fine. And then, we can appoint a board, an oversight board, for the operations, but they're not compensated. They don't receive any benefit from Oracle. That's not the way it works, not the way any of our boards work, and that concerns me.
If I may respond, saving this building is far more important than than giving the Friends of Historic Claphlin a very small amount of money. We have to fit hit hit this May twenty-fifth deadline. I will tell you that there is a very, very good chance that the historic tax credit program will disappear under the current tax reform. We have to make this May twenty-fifth deadline. I will commit right now that we will strike that compensation to Friends of Historic Claphlin if that provides comfort. That's, it's more important to save this building than to to try and figure out the small level of compensation. So, we will commit to taking that out in the next iteration of the MOU.
Can we, and I was going to propose, can we, Lucy, have council vote to amend whatever is being proposed here today, to take that out, so it by force of ordinance and their powers, local governing authority, that does not occur, and still, subject to that amendment, approve what they're requesting today and move forward? Because I think everybody wants to move forward, but this is a real concern.
Yes, we can certainly make an amendment to that effect. The resolution that's before them already would provide that the city manager and city attorney would approve the form of the MOA. They would know that that was the provision that needed to be in it, but if you would like the no-compensation provision expressly stated, we can amend the resolution to do that.
Okay. All right, well, that's something to consider. We've got a lot of folks that want to speak, so we'll continue on. Let's see, Counselor Garrett.
I'd have to say, I was thinking the same thing Counselor Allen was was saying, but if we amended, I mean, I do think if we're going to be taking on a role, you know, the mayor's writing letters, we're doing things to get this done at the national level, I don't think it needs to be eliminated completely. I just think the city needs to receive the five percent, particularly if we're going to be responsible for monitoring this project. But I agree, you know, this would be like us, somebody coming to us and saying, I want to put a, which we had somebody come and want to put a cell phone tower in Lake Bottom, and some citizen brought it to us, and they created an organization, and then rather than the city getting the rent, we'd be paying it to the or the organization would get. Doesn't make any sense. I've never heard of it none before. But I think if we do it, we need to substitute the city in that.
Okay. Let's see, we've got up next Counselor Thomas.
I appreciate what Mr. Beal said, that we are going in a, an entirely different direction than when all this started. When all this started, it started because the school district gave the land to the city because they no longer could use it as a school, and that's what the deed said had to be done. And the city was on the verge of giving it to the federal government because we couldn't use it as a school. And it was at that point that the Friends of Claphlin, of Historic Claphlin, came to us and said, give us the opportunity to develop this as a as an educational center. They were talking about GED classes, they were talking about after-school tutoring, they were talking about all those kinds of things that they were going to put in that site. And that's why we said to them, okay, we'll give you time to do that, and here are the deadlines by which you need to have the building, the foundation stabilized, the roof replaced, and all those kinds of things. And then, all of a sudden, we are now presented with this brand-new concept and given a deadline of a week to get it done, or two weeks to get it done. If the city gets the deed restriction lifted, that lifts all requirements for educational purposes. So, the Friends of Historic Claphlin do not have to do educational programs if we get that deed restriction lifted. In looking at the schematic that was on the ECAP, I can't find it this morning, but it was on there, I saw it over the weekend, what Oracle has proposed to do in that, on that site, is all of the current building, the current school, would be housing, with the exception of a of an office. And then, there would be a new building behind the current building that would also be housing, except for what they called a community room for educational purposes. Now, I'm not sure what the Friends of Historic Claphlin would do if they would hold daily classes in that, if that deed restriction were not lifted. I don't know. I have no concept that the federal government wants that two and a half acres in the middle of Columbus, that I don't know what they'd do with it. I think that the deed restriction's going to be there. But once that deed restriction is lifted, then whatever arrangement is made should be between the city and the developer. And then, if the Friends of Historic Claphlin want to say either to the city or to the developer, we'd like to hold some classes in your community room, that's an entirely different issue and different concept over here. Can we get that done by the twenty-fifth of May? I don't know that we can. I I think that, and I hear what Mr. Henry's saying about tax credits may go away, but this is so convoluted, I can't wait for the next time we meet for another, you know, twist to be put on the table. I just have a real problem with our going forward. I'm not sure why the Friends of Claphlin are even in the mix of this ordinance, of this resolution. They don't play a part anymore with the relationship between the city and the developer. I just will tell you that I'm going to have a hard time. I just will tell you that I'm going to have a hard time voting in favor of this resolution because it is so convoluted, and I want this to happen. I want this building to be turned into a useful commodity, and I want Friends of Historic Claflin to be able to have a plaque in the community room that says this was the first school for African-American children in this city, and all of those kinds of things, but I don't think that we have to, I just think that we need to make haste slowly in all of this, and I'm all for let's get this deed restriction lifted, and it becomes the city property, then free and clear. We can sell it to the developer if we want to do that, or we can lease it to them, or however, whatever kind of combination there are we want to do, but I just don't think that we need to enter into this without knowing exactly what we're doing, and I don't think we know what we're doing.
Thank you, Counselor Thomas, and there's others to speak. I know, sir, tell me your last name one more time, I'm so sorry I didn't jot it down. You, yes, the developer?
Henry.
Henry. I think you're right, that the tax credits are going away. I get alerts every day from the U.S. Conference of Mayors, from Georgia Municipal Association, from the ACCG, and they're firmly convinced that there will be no more tax credits in the future, so it's not just you being speculative, we're having to retool our cities for that. And so I do think there's a sense of urgency, but I share, all of the councilors that have spoken so far, grave concern about how this is structured. I thought that we were clear that there would be no intermediary, that the, you know, I expressed in my words that the city manager would be, quote, "in charge of the project" because he answers to counsel and to the mayor, and I thought that would be reflected in the documents, it was my understanding, so there's been some misfiring, but I would like to, we have other councilors in line, pose for counsel's consideration that if there is some way that counsel can pass this resolution with the limitations that are concerning us that seem to have nothing to do with you obtaining these tax credits, which truly, you don't need Friends of Claflin for, you need the city for. I would like us to try to reach that objective here today, and we can work out these details related to the money and how it's spent, and all of it, of course, will be subject to getting this federal waiver, if you will. So I think we have some stopgaps along the way if we can get consent, a majority consent among counsel, to limit this relationship appropriately through this resolution, which will bind you, and then we will try to get the details ironed out later so we can still have a shot at this. That being said, I'm going to turn it over to, are you ready, or you want me to go? I'll go to skip, to Counselor Henderson.
Counselor Baker, I think.
Okay, well, we'll do Counselor Baker and Counselor Henderson.
It doesn't matter, I'll just go very briefly. Before we throw that little 5% component out the window, Counselor Thomas, if by chance there is an educational component that stays, you know, we hope there is, maybe there will be, there may be a need to pay for some programming. So before we get rid of the 5%, maybe there's a way to, you know, either have us manage it or something to funnel it back into programming that we wouldn't have to pay for otherwise, depending on how that's going to shake up, I don't know. And I guess my other question is, can you give us a brief, quick list of what it is you need to go for the credits? I mean, is it a lease, is it an MOU? What exactly do you have to have in hand by May 25th? Regardless who it's from, what is, what do you need? That's what I'm lost.
I need the zoning approved, and I need the lease extended to 45 years. I would love to think creatively how to provide some upside for the city, but as far as the lease is concerned, we have to keep the lease amount the same to meet DCA's requirements. That said, you know, we're flexible, and we can think creatively how to provide some upside for the city. One other note I want to make about Friends of Historic Claflin, though, whether it's them or somebody else, we need somebody to help us with the educational component, we're not educators, so we would seek, if not Friends of Historic Claflin, another qualified non-for-profit to help us with that.
Right.
Having that component to the property is important to us.
Yes, well, I think it's important to the community, but is it essential for your application?
It is, it's part of what we're promising to DCA.
Okay, okay. All right, Counselor Henderson.
Thank you, Mayor. I, you know, this is, this was weird occasions when I agree with everybody, and even though people are on opposite sides, I do agree with Counselor Thomas in that this thing has made some very sudden moves and changes in direction, and government does not move that way. We are not nimble, and we are not alone, because every government moves very methodically, and with good reason. That's because we're the stewards of the taxpayers' dollars, and we owe them accountability. I also recognize that this is an opportunity to create a development while preserving some history, and let me just ask this question, or you may not be able to give a definitive answer, but is it, would it be accurate to say it's likely that if this doesn't go through and the tax credits go away, this will end up being demolished?
Yes, we would either have to demolish it in-house or else revert it back to the federal government, which, if they get it, the most likely will sit there another 10 years before they demolish it.
It'll deteriorate, it'll start to crumble. And here's where I sit on this thing right now. I have listened to the city manager, I've listened to our city attorney, yes, I don't like the path this thing has taken, and I don't mean that in a negative sense, I just mean that it has not gone as I would have liked to have seen it go on if we'd had the time to do it, but we have an opportunity that, maybe it'll exist next year, maybe it won't. I feel confident in listening to the people that we hold accountable, that we have little to, well, no liability in this transaction. Everything right now is basically, I keep using contingency contract in real estate, almost every transaction has a contingency or 20, and that is things that have to be accomplished in order for this to move forward. So this still may not get done. If we get it done, the federal government may, as Counselor Thomas has voiced a concern, may decide they're not going to do away with that deed restriction, in that case, it dies. We've spent no money, you're out very little money, or they may say they'll cancel that restriction, and then they run out of the tax credits, or we come to the table a little later, they don't like our application, in that instance, the contract dies. Then we're right back where we are right now, in a position where we either demolish it and try to take ownership of the lot and regentrify even more of that area close to the Liberty District, or we turn it back into the federal government and it becomes an albatross in that area, just getting worse and worse. So this is not the way I'd like to see it done, but based on the assurances of the people that we pay to tell us what's going on and how our exposure is, telling me that we don't have any skin in the game, I'm willing to move forward with this, and maybe hold my nose a little bit while we do it, because we're not at risk, the taxpayers aren't at risk. The one remaining issue that I have a concern with, and this is, and I pray this doesn't sound negative against any organization, if we're going to be involved in a tax credit financing contract with a developer, I think it's critical that we have the primary, not just decision-making, but the primary interaction with the developer. So if there's a way to, in the MOU, construct that so that Friends of Historic Claflin remain the holder of the lease, while the city's community redevelopment area or our real estate folks will take point on negotiations and communications during that term of that lease, because that also gives us the authority to, if we had to, if something didn't happen and some audits didn't come in right, we could then change the philanthropic organization that's in charge of the programming. For one, if we can structure it, would love to see the 5% continue and come to the city and let the city use that as a fund to be directed by the Friends of Historic Claflin or another philanthropic board to direct the programming, which gives us, again, a little bit more control. I appreciate your willingness to take the 5% off the table, no offense, but that doesn't come across as too magnanimous, you're making another 5% of the project. I'm just, I'm just kind of poking fun at you now, but I think it's an opportunity that we are going to regret if we miss, particularly if the tax credits go away, and I think that we've gotten assurances from the people here that we hire to do the work for us, that we are not at any risk. This is a contract that if it goes through, we're going to have a nice, a nice quality housing environment for a below-market rate, and at worst, we're either going to tear it down and keep the lot, or we're going to turn it back over to the government. So if we can answer that one piece, can we structure the MOU so that we are doing the bulk of any kind of negotiation, any interaction, we're writing point on this, even though we have a lease with FHC?
That can be done.
Okay.
And let me reemphasize what you just said. I was not very optimistic when this started, that we would be able to save Claflin's school. You know, after 45 years of working around and dealing with things, you get a sense of whether things float and whether there's a money resource, so I really didn't think it would go. I was really delighted when this other opportunity came, because I really felt it'd be good for the city to save Claflin and that end of town. So it's really a positive thing to be done, and if it's not being done, as has been said, I don't think that Claflin will be saved, and I think that that area will remain a eyesore, that particular two acres. So I really think from just the standpoint of a positive, hopeful situation for the city, I think this is the way to go, and I agree with you on that.
And one last thing, just very brief, I know I've been talking more than I normally do, but that's an area of town through our efforts of Liberty District that we've been trying very hard to build critical mass. We've talked about reviving retail and reviving commercial, and we haven't been able to really accomplish that because we've had trouble building that critical mass of residential things that people are going to be able to live down there and then shop in that area. So I see this as an opportunity for us to take a step in that direction as well.
All right. Let's see, we have the mayor pro temp.
I agree with Counselor Henderson on the latter part of your conversation, and what, the way we got here, when the Friends of Claflin started raising money, we said to them they had to partner with somebody to get the money that they needed to redo the building. We didn't say who they had to get with, but they had to find a partner, and that's how they got here. They went out to find somebody who would help them revitalize that building. It's not 100% education, and I also want to say that when the school system had that building, the last few years, I know it was not used as a school, it was used as an admin building, so there's a difference between an admin building and a school building.
Okay. All right, we have next Counselor Thomas.
Mr. Henry, did I understand you to say that for your application for the tax credits, that you need to have Friends of Historic Claflin on the lease? Did I understand that correctly?
No, I didn't, I didn't say that.
Okay.
I said that we promised DCA that we would have educational services for our tenant base, or the folks that live there, and it would need to be done by somebody like Friends of Historic Claflin.
So if we did, as Counselor Henderson was saying, and fashioned some kind of a lease between the city and Oracle, if that lease said something in it to the effect that there would be educational services or whatever, that would serve your purposes?
You know, I, if we had the luxury of time, I would love to do something like that, I just, I don't think we have the time to do that, and I don't think that, I mean, I don't know all the rules, I would defer to the city's attorney, but I believe that if we form a new lease, there has to be an RFP process that will take a long time, and we won't be able to meet our May 25 deadline.
Well, if, is that right?
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought you were on...
First with an independent project, we would need to RFP.
Not with an independent lease. If we did the lease between the city and Oracle rather than between Historic Claflin and Oracle, we'd have to do an RFP? Is that what I'm hearing?
It is better to leave it as a three-part lease.
I'm wondering if, I'm trying to, I'm trying to get us to where we need to be, if we, if there was something that said the lease is between the city, Friends of Historic Claflin, Oracle, and at the point that you get your tax credits, Historic, the Friends of Historic Claflin fall off the lease, and it becomes between the city and Oracle, would...
That can be done very easily by simply having the lease assigned to Oracle. That eliminates Claflin's involvement. I don't know if that will present a problem for getting the funds, but that can be done. The lease provides for assignment, the lease also provides for subletting without permission, so we have built-in controls over that lease. So if, in fact, we want to have a one-on-one relationship with Oracle, that's easy enough to do with the existing structure. The only reason, I'm not wedded to that document, even though it's my document. I'm hearing Mr. Henry say that we are having to live with that document because of the situation with the credits, but living with that document does, the city doesn't lose control over the property, and it can be simply assigned or sublet to Oracle at some point as part of the MOU or letter of understanding or whatever, so I don't think that's a problem. I think the main problem is trying to meet the timeline for the credits, and I think we can do that, even with the gun to our head, and still allow Oracle to become the primary obligor under the lease, either by being a subletcy or an assenee, because it provides for that explicitly, and it requires the city manager to approve of it. Right now, in the document...
I think I'm okay right now.
Jason, is there, excuse me, Jacob, I'm sorry, and perhaps Lucy, we've got another counselor in line, but it seems to me, maybe I'm wrong, but it seems to me that we might be able to do this today, which is what you need, with a modification of the resolution that addresses this concern, this concern related to Claflin, not necessarily change the lease, but if counsel puts in this resolution, whatever you all hopefully are going to propose to us here in a moment, thou shall not give money to a nonprofit related to this agreement or whatever, and they can pass it enough then to get it to you all to hammer out the details of this agreement, which, as I understand, it will come back to counsel, so you can get your tax credits. It seems to me we may be able to get all this wrapped up here today, because I don't think we can renegotiate the individual provisions of the lease here today.
No, we don't have the luxury of that time.
Exactly, and so I think we're going to let Counselor Allen speak, I'm going to turn the floor over to him, but if you all can hammer out some language that you would propose as best you can understand from counsel's direction here today, that should amend this resolution, then I think you should say so, and counsel can then begin to debate it and consider that proposed amendment, so...
Well, if things don't work out in regard to Oracle and Claflin, Friends of Claflin and the city, the city will take over the property, I think, in July, because the lease really comes to an end. If certain contingencies are not met by Claflin, because of the timelines that I believe Counselor Thomas mentioned, the lease will come... Counselor Thomas mentioned, the lease will come to an end. So basically speaking, we can, we still have control over the lease, if things don't follow through, as the MOU or whatever is agreed to.
Okay. Counselor Allen.
Well, I wanted to go back to the concern I raised earlier regarding the compensation from Oracle to Friends of Claflin. How are we going to address that? How can we address that today to move forward and let this, let this go through the process?
I think, Mr. Henry, I don't want to speak for him, because that provision is not in the lease as existing. It's an agreement, I think, that Oracle has with Friends of Claflin, to which I was not involved, or with which I was not involved. So I think he needs to address that.
Sure. I mean, we, we can restructure it. At the end of the day, the money is intended to pay for these services. So whether the money goes to Friends of Historic Claflin, so they can fund the, the services, or whether we keep the 5% and pay for the services ourselves, it doesn't really matter to us. It's not like an additional 5% is going into our pocket. Those services have to be paid for. So we'll just cover it, we'll cover it directly.
Well, I think, I think the way your MOU is worded now, the 5% goes to Friends of Claflin.
Well, technically, the entire amount comes to us, and we would make a distribution to them. But that's a non-binding agreement that was done way in the beginning. We're here today, and if that particular provision needs to change, we're finally changing it.
Did I read something in this package regarding the MOU being rescinded?
Yes.
So when, when will that rescission be effective?
Upon adoption of the resolution. I mean, they will, they've agreed to rescind it already, and as soon as the resolution's accepted, it will be rescinded.
And then the city manager could visit with Oracle and, I guess, re-agree or work out details on the 95-5 split.
Will all go away, and then we'll start with negotiation of a new MOA that would be informed satisfactory to the city manager and the city attorney, that would readdress the compensation issue and any other issues that we need to. I think one thing that might be helpful, Mayor, is if we look quickly at this resolution and go through what it already requires, and then maybe counselors would like to add other restrictions that they would like.
Can we put it up on the screen, the resolution, please, so that the Assistant City Attorney can, can walk us through it?
All right. First item is, if you'll go down to the second, whereas, we're changing the scope of the project to can, from school into affordable housing, with a portion of the school to remain set aside for educational programs and display the history of the school. We're allowing Friends of Historic Claflin to enter into an agreement satisfactory to the city manager and city attorney with the developer to carry out the redevelopment using low-income housing tax credits and historic tax credits. We're extending the lease to 45 years, due to the requirements of the tax credit program. The lease itself will provide for annual reporting and monitoring by council of Friends of Historic Claflin's performance under the lease. And the lease will also provide a manner in which the replacement of Friends of Historic Claflin, as less C, could occur in the event of a breach of the agreement. And then there will be a separate letter in the next whereas coming to the city, saying that the February 8 memorandum of agreement is of no force in effect, and also confirming that the developer assumes full financial responsibility for any loss incurred as a result of expenditures before the deed restriction is lifted or the tax credits are received.
Okay. One question I have is regarding the low-income housing tax credits, the historic tax credits. The city, as they pass through for those, is that correct? Or does that go directly to Oracle?
So we're, I'll try and make this as interesting as possible.
Closer to the mind.
Sorry. There will be a new limited partnership created, and there'll be two entities that own that limited partnership. One, the one entity will be the general partner, and that's us, that's Oracle. The other entity will be a limited partner, and that's really the investor, and they invest into the partnership. And by virtue of that investment, they get tax benefits. So it goes directly through our entity, or through the ownership entity, to the limited partner. So the city wouldn't be involved in that at all.
Okay. Okay, thank you, Mayor.
Okay. Let's see here, we have next the Mayor Pro Tim.
Assistant Attorney, couldn't we also put a statement in there, or do we need to, that if 5% is paid by Oracle, it will come to the city, but it's to be used strictly for educational purposes with the Friends of Historic Claflin?
I suppose we could make the city a party to the memorandum of agreement, in which case, instead of just approving it.
Does it have to be Friends of Claflin?
Mayor Pro Tim.
Can it be a general description of a governing board, or something like that?
I don't care, as long as we make sure that that 5% goes to the education.
That was, that was my concern, is I want the education piece and funding it, the 5% of the value of funding, and then Counselor Henderson walked us through that earlier. And that would be, I'm just, I'm not comfortable with tying it to one organization.
And that's what I want to bring up also, Counselor Allen. You know, they could, that, that 5% can come from Oracle to the city, and then we can determine which nonprofit agency would receive that. Instead of tying it to a particular group, we can just say a nonprofit agency. And then they can petition us so that it, because it has to be used specifically for educational purposes.
We have the accounting and the funding and all that.
That's correct.
We can keep up with all that.
Miss Son.
Can I add something, though? It, it has to be structured in a way so it's not perceived to be a, a rent payment through the lease. So we just have to be mindful of how we structure, how that money is, is funneled, and it can go into a reserve, and that's fine. But we have to be mindful of how that's structured. Also, whoever the non-for-profit is, you know, it's important to us, because, you know, we're, we're going to be your partner for a long, long time. And this is a financial investment for us, too. We want to make sure that whoever it is, that we have a seat at the table. And we want to make sure that it's the right, you know, I'm sure that you would select somebody that's fine, but we would want a, a seat at the table and making sure that it fits for us, too.
Okay. Let's see here, we have Counselor Thomas.
What we're being asked to do is to amend the lease agreement with Friends of Historic Claflin in order to allow for the conversion of the school into these, into affordable housing. One of the provisions in this, this whereas that Lucy read, said to allow the Friends of Historic Claflin to enter into the, an agreement satisfactory with the city manager and city attorney with the developer. I thought we were not going to do that.
Well, that is replacing the MOA that is of no force in effect, once this happens. And we, the discussion has evolved. If it does not cause problems with the tax credits, the city could become a party, rather than just an approving force for that agreement. It could be a three-part agreement, unless that causes you tax credit problems.
That's fine. That's fine. As long as it doesn't trigger the requirement to go through an RFP process, my enemy right now is time.
I'm, I'm, I guess, why would, why would the Friends of Historic Claflin have to enter into the agreement with the developer?
Because they're a party to the lease.
That's right. They're a party to the lease. They hold the lease at this point. And part of the transaction in assigning it or subletting it, whatever will be done with it, to Oracle, needs their involvement. And obviously, because of Oracle wanting them, I presume, they are another nonprofit to have some sort of involvement in the transaction. They're the automobile of choice at this point.
And so this, this amendment would have prevented, there's a question mark at the end of this, Mr. Bill, would have prevented what has happened with Friends of Historic Claflin entering into an agreement with the developer without our knowledge. Is that right?
The rescission of the MOU will, plus the fact that we have to approve of any assignment of the lease or subletting of the lease. What was done really was, on their part, was premature and, and ineffective, because it didn't involve us.
And, and this requires our involvement?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. I want to make sure that, that that's heard loudly and clearly, that this.
It will require our involvement because of the provisions of the existing lease, and it also will require our involvement because of what Lucy and Laura and the powers that be will put into this MOU, or whatever it's called.
And we anticipate that this can be done in the next few days, in order for Mr. Henry to have it in hand, in order to do what he needs to do?
It'll have to be. It'll have to be. But the resolution from council, framing how this is to be done, has to be approved before we can proceed in doing anything.
And once that's done, you think we can meet his timeline?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. I can't believe this, but there's no other counselors in line to discuss this matter. So what is the proposed amendment of the language? Was there somebody who said something? Counselor, Counselor Allen.
Mayor Pro Tim and I were talking about her proposed amendment, which specifies the educational piece, and we were trying to see if that's already in here. It seems like it may be already in under, is that part of number one? Change the scope of the project to include the conversion of the school into 44 units for affordable housing, with a portion of the school to remain set aside for educational programs and a display of the school history. Is that, is that okay with you? And then we can, we can amend it after we, we can amend the agreement later, is that what Mr. Bill was saying? To, to more specify the terms. And that's okay with you?
That's fine.
That'll, okay.
Okay. So that is a proposed amendment of this resolution.
I mean, that's, we're going to leave it like it is.
Oh, okay. Okay. I'm sorry.
And then we can amend it later if we need to. So I move the adoption of the resolution.
In a second. All right. Any further discussion? All right. I will switch over, and you may record your votes electronically. And it does pass. Thank you. All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Yeah. Well, we appreciate your time. I hope you know we're just trying to get it right. I know it may be discouraging some days, but trust me, we're, we're trying to get it right for you as well as, as for the citizens, so.
Believe me, you know, your concerns are my concerns, so we're, we're aligned.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Jesse, I, I think, why don't you direct any comment you have to the city manager's office about it, sort of where we are, if that's all right?
That's not all right, Mayor, but.
All right, well, if.
I'm glad y'all voted, we voted, but that, it just seemed like we're in the room, but we're invisible. I mean, you know, that's, that's not good.
Yeah, that's, that's not true. That, that's certainly not accurate. We, we care very much about this, but that's the type of thing I think would be best handled in a conversation with those from Friends from Claflin, to understand what just happened. It's trying to achieve your objective, the shared objective, truly. So let's continue to talk as we get this legalese correct, and, and we'll listen to your concern. And most certainly, after all of that, after we've figured this out, then, you know, you're always welcome to come back and address counsel. But I, I think we may be closer to your shared objective than maybe you feel you are after hearing all that discussion. Okay? All right. Deputy City Manager Goodwin.
Okay, Mayor. Next, we have the FY '18 inmate capacity agreement. This is an annual agreement between the city and the Department of Corrections that provides for the minimum of 528 inmates, state inmates, that are housed at our Muskogee County prison.
All right. We've got a motion in second for approval. Seeing no discussion. Did you have something, Counselor Allen?
Yes.
Okay, hold on just a second, let me switch back. Do that, though. Okay. There you go, Counselor Allen.
Okay. In the resolution, it says a minimum of 528 inmates, state inmates. And then if you look down in the body, under number one, care and custody, it says, county agrees to provide complete care of up to 528. Is that, does that need to be changed? And one, one part it says minimum, the other one says up to.
Up to, mhm. I, I think, Lucy, I, I don't know that it makes a, what, what.
It sounds like there's a maximum.
It could be more.
It sounds like we're talking about maximum.
I would think it would be up to 528. My recollection is that's about the capacity, by the time you add the Oracle.
Yeah. So up to is, yeah. But I think the, what he said, the minimum of 528 means certainly more, so.
Yeah, if we're talking about a minimum, in number one, it looks to me, it reads to me, a layperson, I'm not an attorney, but it says up to, which to me sets a maximum.
Just one second, I'm checking the actual agreement.
Yeah. It, it really should be no more than 528.
I believe that's true.
That's right.
So the up to.
All right.
So can we, we can just make that change in there? To be consistent, up to 528.
Does that need a motion by council to amend? Madam City Attorney, is there, should we amend?
Are we looking, are we looking to set a minimum, or are we looking to house just 528?
I will say, so that we know, and, and, you know, there are occasions where we do go over 528, and we stay at over 528 for a month or two, and we're all, the judges are notified, I'm notified. We, we have certain rules that we have to follow, but we've had, we've had up in the 550s before, for a short period of time.
Okay.
The resolution actually does not specify a number. It just specifies that the agreement will be entered into. So as long as we make sure that the actual agreement has the correct number, that's it.
Well, well, this particular agreement is specifically setting the minimum. That, that's the purpose of this particular agreement. Sets the minimum of the state inmates that are going to be housed here.
So number one should change, be changed to a minimum of 528.
That's right. I think minimum, because that's what this is, the annual minimum capacity agreement.
I make a motion, we change the wording, after the word custody, to a minimum of 528, and strike the word of, up to.
Because then, Mayor, that takes care of those times when we have more.
Okay. And that's a second by the Mayor Pro Tim. I will say, you know, we do have under, and we do maintain under.
We're able to house, and house on the 528. If it falls below the 5, we can handle it.
At least.
Okay. All right. So is everybody fine with the proposed amendment? I, I don't see any further discussion. This is now to the amendment, as stated by Counselor Allen. All those in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. And with that amendment, Lindsey, did we have a motion in second? I think we did, because I flipped over. Okay. So now, as amended, the item is cued for your electronic voting. It does pass.
Okay. Item three is a stair egress encroachment of right-of-way. This is ask authorizing a permanent encroachment at 1032 Broadway to construct a stair egress that will extend three, three feet, four inches into the public right-of-way.
We've got a motion in second for approval. Is there any discussion related to this item? All right. Oh, just a moment here. Okay. The item's cued for your electronic voting. And it passes.
Item four, the Georgia High Demand Career Initiative Sector Partnership Capacity Building Grant Proposal is requesting that, to accept grant funds set aside for Building Grant Proposal is requesting that to accept grant funds set aside for Region Eight in the amount of $250,000 with a 10% match, in-kind match.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second. Oh, yes, for further discussion, Counselor Thomas?
Can you give me just an idea of what that in-kind work will be? What is the...
Administrative support, just, I mean, that's all it is, the administrative support piece.
Thank you. All right. There being no further discussion. The item is cued for voting. And it passes.
Item five, purchases. We have purchases A through M. Item A is a hazard mitigation plan update, which was last approved by FEMA in 2012.
We've got a motion and second for approval. Any discussion on this item? Seeing none? The item is cued for your voting. Okay, that item did pass, and we have a motion from Mayor Protem to approve purchases. Did you say A?
I said B.
Okay, B.
B.
B through M.
[inaudible]
Okay. Any other items to be pulled for discussion? Okay, we have on the floor...
I'm sorry, also, we need to pull item H. We'll come back with that item.
Okay, so let me see if I can get this straight. We have a motion, do we have a second, by the way?
Sorry.
Okay, we have a motion to approve items B, C, D, E, F, G, I, J, K, and L. And those items are listed before you on the screen. And there is, okay, that's to later. So for those items, I will call for your oral vote, because I can't do an electronic vote since it's been segmented. All those in favor of the items is called, please state aye. Are there any opposed? Okay, let's start in order, item A. Okay, so we did A, excuse me. All right, H, item H. Counselor Garrett, is that you?
That was it.
Okay, you're on M. Would anyone like to...
We pulled, yeah, we pulled H.
Okay, you just pulled it?
Yeah, we pulled it, we'll not deal with that today.
Okay, and so now we go to item M, which is a replacement computers for police department funded by OLOS salary savings. And let's go to Counselor Garrett.
I just wanted to get some clarification. I thought we had passed a resolution saying all salary savings had to go to the reserve. Is that different for the OLOS, or...
Yes, that was for general fund only. That was for general fund only.
Correct.
Yeah, this is, this is OLOS.
Yeah, we were very, it was very specific in that ordinance that it was general fund, salary savings.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure.
But nevertheless, this has to come to council. Let's see, Counselor Thomas?
I guess my question is, what salary savings are we talking about in the OLOS?
Let's hear from Major Sweeney, and also if Angelica's available to respond to that question.
I believe they're, Angelica, aren't they, police salary savings?
Personnel?
Personnel from police salary savings.
As I recall, we had authorized 110 officers to be paid, salary to be paid from the OLOS, and the last report that I saw said we had 104 that were being paid from the OLOS.
That's correct, but also budgeted in the OLOS are those supplements for the vacancies that the police department has in the general fund. So it's basically using the salary, the supplements from those vacant positions in the general fund to fund this particular purchase.
So you're talking about the $3,000 stipend?
Yes, ma'am.
And so you're using the $3,000 stipend that would have gone to, how many vacancies do we have in the police department, in the general fund?
I'm not exactly sure, but it's about 80 or so in the, in the general fund. I can look that up and provide you with a number.
This is asking for $311,000. And are you saying we've got $311,000 in salary savings in OLOS money?
Yes, ma'am.
The starting salary is thirty-three.
That's 330,000, plus 3,000 stipend, that'd be another 30,000. So you'd have 360,000 roughly, with my simple math.
But, but you, some of those positions have been filled at times during the year, and so that money has been, has been used. Have all six of those positions in the 110 been empty all year, all budget year?
I mean, it does fluctuate. I mean, it fluctuates on a month-to-month basis. I mean, sometimes, like, as of April, it's still 104. I'll share that with you when I give the finance update, but it does fluctuate. But they have enough in salary savings in OLOS to accommodate this particular purchase. And it is primarily funded from the supplements that we're not actually, we're not paying out because we have so many vacancies in the general fund.
I want to give the police department what they need in this equipment, and if it needs to come from the OLOS, that's one thing. I'm a little nervous about our using salary savings. We've talked about that, and we've talked about... It seems to me sometimes that we're counting this money two or three different times, in two or three different ways. And maybe not, maybe it's just that I don't get a, what I feel is an update, a regular update, but if you're telling me that we've got $311,112 in salary savings in the OLOS, my question is why? And secondly, you know, I take you at your word.
Well, they do have it in the police department, OLOS, to fund this, this particular purchase. And the primary reason why is because of the vacancies that they have consistently throughout the year in the police department.
But those vacancies that are in the general fund are not typically paid for out of the OLOS, except the $3,000 stipend to those people.
That's correct.
Their salary itself is not paid out of the OLOS.
That's correct.
Well, I think you need to explain, then, where this money comes from. So it's not salary savings, if that's your answer to Counselor Thomas's question. It can't be. Do you see what she's saying and why there's, why there's a miss here? She's saying that all OLOS positions are completely full, so there would be no savings.
There's six, there's six vacancies in the police department, or the last figure that we had.
That's correct.
From OLOS.
I sense there is an answer to this question, and it's not being provided. And unless it is provided, there's going to continue to be this, and we're going to have, you know, council concern. So we need to give them the answer to that question.
Well, all of the supplements for all of our public safety sworn officers are paid out of the OLOS fund.
Right.
And for the police department, because they have over 80-plus vacancies, those supplements are not being paid out of the OLOS fund because of those vacancies. So we're realizing salary savings in the OLOS fund because we're not paying those supplements.
So that's $240,000 if none of that is paid at any time during the budget year, correct? $3,000 times 80 people is $240,000, right?
That's correct.
And so if none of those people were paid any portion of that $3,000 during the fiscal year, you've got the $240,000.
Right. But they also do have vacancies within the OLOS fund itself, that is for the entire salary for the position. It's the position and the supplement. Those six, they are authorized 110, those six, and it's really been consistent throughout the year, where it's been 102, 103, 104. They haven't been at the full capacity for the entire fiscal year. So there is salary savings. In addition to what we counted as salary savings is the FICA. I have to do the calculations to see exactly how much that equates to being, but...
300, $3,112 is what we budget per...
$3,121.
Twenty-one.
Yes, ma'am.
Plus FICA.
Plus FICA.
Okay, we've got Counselor Allen, you wanted to add to that?
Yeah, Angelica, so what you're, the monies that you're talking about using would be through the end of the fiscal year, this fiscal year, for salary savings of the $3,000 stipend for all of, for the vacancies that come from the OLOS. And then you have six vacancies paid out of the OLOS.
That's correct.
So none of those will be filled between now and the end of the fiscal year. But, I mean, if we're using that money for this computers, then you won't, you won't have it available to hire anybody.
Well, we've already achieved this amount of salary savings in the OLOS fund. So if the police department decided to fill this, fill some of those six positions, they still have the funding capacity to do so. We've achieved, oh, but we've achieved the $311,000.
So you have, okay, so you have beyond $311,000 to utilize, plus FICA?
That's correct.
To utilize, okay.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, I got you.
Counselor Henderson?
Just a quick question. I know when we were, and it gets back to what Counselor Thomas was asking, when we were estimating our reserve fund balance at the end of 17, we calculated salary savings that we were not going to expend. And because, just, and just to clarify, because we did not specifically state that OLOS salary savings, those were not computed in estimating our total number of reserve days.
That's correct.
Okay, so, all right, so we went ahead and figured that based on, we assume that money would be expended?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
That's correct.
Because I know those are added together to get our reserve.
They are, but what we were estimating excluded the OLOS.
All right. I don't know that, do we have a motion? Lindsey? Okay.
And because this is utilizing salary savings, that's why it's before council, because we don't allow departments to spend salary savings across the board without it coming to council for approval.
Okay. We've got a motion from Counselor Allen, a second from Counselor Huff. Any further discussion on this item? Seeing none? Well, I have to take an oral vote, excuse me. All those in favor of approval of item M, which is the replacement of computers for police department funded by OLOS salary savings, please state aye. Are there any opposed? All right, thank you.
Okay, that concludes our purchases. We do have a couple of updates, Mayor. Special enforcement and our inspections and codes will come. There was some discussion on types of violations that were allowable, or violations that were, that would happen and occur, and those things that were not considered violations, and kind of how all of that fits together. And so they will come with the, an update on, from both of their vantages in, in their divisions. So Drew Short and John Hutchinson.
Good morning again. We'll try to make this pretty, pretty brief here. Like I said, we just kind of want to go back through and explain current enforcement standards between inspections and codes and special enforcement, so kind of everyone knows what we do. Like I said, this is kind of a snapshot of a, you know, area view of a house, and this is new construction. If you look at this, you know, engineering and planning, work on setbacks, you know, type of zoning, type of use, that kind of thing, kind of what's circling in the yellow is inspections and codes. So that's the structure itself, any side accessory structures, any pool houses, and also swimming pools at that point. So we do mandate the initial construction and make sure the deck, liner, all that stuff is done correctly. Once you get to existing structures, which is, you know, a lot of the properties we deal with, that we get complaints on, special enforcement kind of takes the blue area, which is the yards, there's trees, anything related with solid waste, that kind of stuff. And especially in codes, it's still to the structures that are on the site. Like I said, we, I've kind of gone through with you all about chapter eight and all the revisions we've done in chapter eight to consolidate that, so I'm not going to go through that. UDO, there's chapters two, three, and four, which we do enforce in other methods. Building code, like I said, property maintenance. Like I said, right now, now that it has been changed, we can go after all properties. Previously, it was just residential. Like I said, working mechanical systems, structural deficiencies, and security, make sure the properties are boarded up. This is kind of a flow chart. Like I said, we get a complaint that's called in, whether they get it through directly to our office or through 311. We get that complaint, our property maintenance inspectors, we have three of them, they're dispatched to the location within three to five days. Any violation is found, the case is created. Like I said, based off the property maintenance code, we'll get calls, and people say, hey, you know, I don't like the color of this house, or I don't like, the paint is faded. There's nothing in the property maintenance code I can do to enforce any of that. So depending on what, what is brought into us, then we'll determine if a case can be created. Once that case is created, the owner is given 45 days to comply. And that's usually the hardest part, because going through the tax assessor's office, finding the actual owner of the property, trying to verify if it's a, you know, you know, if it's in, you know, executor of a will, or if it's in LLC, who's the actual person who can act on that behalf, that kind of stretches out that 45 days. As long as they're working with us, we typically can, can get to the bottom of who it is. Then, like I said, after that 45 days, the property maintenance returns to the site, whatever violations we've written up have not been completed, then we cite the owner and they're taken to court. Like I said, another part of ours is unsafe buildings, and, like I said, we do the demolition process, that's when I come here to council. But by the time it gets to this point, we've worked with this, we've had, you know, either no response from the owner over at least two years, unless it's a burned-out property, so a lot of those, we try to move up faster to get them taken care of. But if it's just a derelict property that's just abandoned, usually it takes about two years to the point where it's, we've done everything we could, contacted next of kin, tried to get home with the families, tried to go to their house, you know, tried, whatever we could do to get them into compliance, if they were local, to be able to do so. And then, like I said, then leans a place on those properties, whether we board them or if we tear them down. All right, demolition flow chart. Like I said, if the case calls in, if you call in a complaint, and like I said, if it's a property, if it fails the 50% test, which I'll explain in the next slide, then a demo case is created. And then it kind of goes through some of the similar, the owner's given a demolition hearing, where they come to us, we ask them, hey, we, this is, this is the state we believe of this property, what are your means to do with it? We have those every month. Where they meet at my office at 10 o'clock on the fourth, yes, the fourth Wednesday of the month, we sit down with them, you know, we'll have 16 or 17 properties, and we may only get like two or three that actually show. So at least we know, they've gotten a notice, we get a certified letter, so we make sure everything's sent back, that we know that somebody did receive and sign for the letter. Then they're also given a 45-day letter at that meeting, and then once again, we go back to investigate, and then the owners again cite it. And then we go from the citing section, then proceeding into coming to council to get you guys to approve to, to use city funds to demolish the property. 50% rule, typically, we repair if the cost is less than 50%, and we demo if it costs more than 50%. So I took the annexed building, just a point of reference. We take the building value off the tax assessor's site, it's a little grainy there, but the building value is a little over $4 million. So if, if the, all the repairs need to be done to that property are under $4 million, we'll say, hey, you need to repair it. If it's over $4 million, we'll say, you know, this is probably too far gone. $4 million is a lot high. Most of the houses we deal with are in the 29,000, 30,000, 40,000. So if your roof is collapsed, we know that's going to be way more than $20,000 to fix. And so we would recommend them to tear it down. Now, we've had people that will come in, and they'll, they'll do what they need to do, and that's fine, but we're just letting them know, based off the assessment that we have in the tax assessor's office, that's how we determine if it needs to be demolished or we put it under property maintenance. And like I said, all our violations follow the Columbus Code, Section 18, so when we go to the, to environmental court, we present the case, we have all this information, the 45-day letter, all these things that we've sent to the owner, telling them what they need to do to come into compliance. Based off the UDO, we have the overlay districts, which is therefore when we're enforcing signs, type of signs, type of usage, and like I said, these things are caught primarily on plan review side. So it's before a lot of this construction is done, we'll get calls from complaints of things on Canal Line Road, or things along 80, about issues about signs that are not where they're supposed to be. And we, you know, we work with the owners. We work with the owners, and we make sure that they come into compliance, and they, they follow the buffer requirements and everything that is required. We have those six... We have those six overlay districts, I think Second Avenue just got added March of this year, so if we get complaints, like I said, we investigate them, just like any other complaint, and we'll cite them. Most times in compliance, we talk to the owner, they move it out of the buffer area, and then most times they're okay. They come in, if they need advance, they'll go to BZA if they're asking for advance of type or look or usage, and we'll work with them that way. Chapter three is mostly all the definitions for certificates of occupancy, which we follow out of chapter eight out of the code. Like I said, we go through that process to make sure whatever certificate of occupancy you're using, a home occupation, those kind of things, like I said, those are things that we can enforce before it gets on the street. So a lot of those we can catch. I kind of put the temporary use in special events, because I know we had the thing with the, the Star South about getting, getting the, the selling of the meat or all that kind of stuff, once again, that's, that's in that section, and that's a section that we enforce as a special event permit comes through with us, the police department, and all the other affiliated departments. Chapter four, like I said, that's the plan reviews, we're making sure you have your screens around, you have your buffers around your mechanical systems, those kind of new construction issues that we view, and also the sign ordinance, which is, like I said, temporary signs, billboard signs on the right-of-way, and like I said, my department does enforce all those. Once again, violations is very similar to the code section, typically these are a thousand dollars per day or per offense, depending on the judge's discretion.
Good afternoon, everybody, it's good to, John.
Okay, good afternoon, just wanted to mention to you, I went to a conference in Savannah, and it is costly, but it made front-page news there. They've come up with some type of clear material for covering the houses now versus the boarding up to make it look better, because it's starting to mount in Savannah, just like Columbus, they have a lot of properties that have to be boarded up. So I was just bringing that to you to check it, I don't, according to what I read, we can't afford it, but, just for, just for.
Well, we, we've actually, I've talked to a company called Clearview, and they actually do do that same, it's a, it's a, I can't think of the name of the material, but like you said, it's clear, it still gives you the vision of a house, so it doesn't give you that boarded-up effect.
Right.
We've actually talked to them, we're looking at possibly doing one house kind of as a trial property.
Okay.
And kind of have them do it, we've got our demolition contractor, who's also our boarding contractor, can cut the boards, he's actually went to the class, so he knows how to apply everything. So we're just trying to kind of find that right house.
Okay.
That has kind of that major street view that we'd be able to use it on.
That look that someone was living there, even though it was empty.
So we're, we're looking at it, to Clearview, they, they call me about every month, say, what's the status? So we're trying to find that right one, and usually by the time we're almost ready to get a dispatch, the, the thing that makes that a lot harder is they have to order that type of material, that's not, like I said, something, you can go to Lowe's and get you some boards and go put it up, and they have to specially cut it.
So I don't have to read the papers in Savannah, I can just call your office? Thank you.
Yes, sir.
That appears to be all this time, thanks, John.
Good afternoon, it's good to be in front of you all to speak about something other than animal control. I feel released here. But special enforcement has a section of environmental law officers, which works very closely with our inspections and codes divisions, we often say between the two, they take care of the structure, and we'll take care of the land. And I wanted to come before you, with John, to discuss exactly what it is that we're doing, and things that we can do to improve our ordinances, to give us more strength and more bite in trying to get these violations in compliance. So the overall goal, and that's just a very detailed mission statement for special enforcement, but our goal is to work with our occupants, residents or owners, to bring them into compliance if we see a violation, not necessarily to take them to court, if we can get it done without taking them to court, then that's our ultimate goal, we just want them to be in compliance. The special enforcement environmental law section enforces sixty-two various violations in our ordinances, they stem from the solid waste collection and disposal ordinance, the animal and fowl ordinance, the unified development ordinance, other city ordinances within the city code of Georgia ordinances, Columbus, Georgia ordinances. To give you an idea of some of the things that we enforce on daily, solid waste collection and disposal, weeds, of course, business licensing, noise ordinance, scrap tire ordinance, alcohol licensing, vehicle salvage yards, fencing, only the fencing, hotel excise tax and mobile home registrations. To give you an idea of what we do when we initially go to these complaints, or when we receive a complaint on there, I wanted you all to know exactly what our initial activities are when we go there. So for weeds, our initial activity is to issue a ten-day warning for weeds, that is if it is the first time that we've dealt with that individual. If there is, if it's a second or third time, we changed our ordinances about four or five years ago, which allowed us to no longer have to issue a warning, we can issue a citation immediately, and that's within a three-year period. If it's after the three-year period, then we have to start all over again. But if it's within a three-year period, we give that one ten-day warning, and then we start issuing citations from them forth. Solid waste is at the officer's discretion, sometimes we go to a location where it's really just egregious, the amount of waste that's on there, and we want to issue an immediate citation, so we do do that. But normally, for the average resident here, we normally issue a five to ten-day warning, depending on the amount of solid waste on the property. Junk vehicles on private property, we give a ten-day warning, on city right-of-ways, seven-day warning, for scrap tires, and that's mainly for your tire handlers in town, anybody over in excess of a hundred tires, we give a ten to fifteen-day warning, but we're also checking the manifest on all those tires at those locations when we get a complaint, and we're out there on that. For salvage yards or commercial fencing, we give a fifteen-day warning, for obstructing the right-of-way, which is something I get a lot of calls from you all regarding, that's your basketball goals, we give a three-day warning, the problem, or it can be discretionary. If we go out there and it's a basketball goal that we've dealt with before, we're not going to give them another warning, we've already told them the law, we're going to issue immediate citation. A lot of times, the problem is when we go out there, there's no adult there, we're dealing with a minor, and of course, we can't issue a minor a warning or a citation, and we have to try and catch the parent at home, but of course, the minors let the parent know that we've been by there and we're looking for them, but we do continue to follow up until we make sure that they understand that they can't be in the street playing basketball with a mobile goal. Areas that we give immediate citations, waste, human, human waste, illegal disposal of human waste, biomedical waste, dumping, noise ordinance, of course, we give a cease and desist order if necessary. We also looked at other counties in the state of Georgia, because we wanted to see exactly what their ordinances allowed for them to do, and in Jackson County, Georgia, one of the things that we found is that they are given the ability to abate a nuisance on property that is occupied, and that's what we're going to be talking about as I go further on, because that is where our problems are, it's not in the unoccupied buildings, we already have that ability, but it's when we have someone living in there that is not the owner, but a resident or a tenant or family member, or whatever the case may be, we don't have that authority to abate the nuisance if we have to. Savannah, Georgia has it in there for abatement of nuisances, it shall be the duty of the marshal to abate or remove nuisances when so directed by the judge of municipal court. Lee County, Georgia is out of their magistrate court, Statesboro, Georgia, municipal court as well, Dublin, Georgia was municipal court, I apologize for leaving that off, and Warner Robinson is also their magistrate court. Our current, our current ordinance, thirteen-one-six-seven-point-seven, unauthorized accumulation and disposal of solid waste, basically states that no person can have an accumulation of solid waste on their property for any reason other than it's bagged up to go to the curbside for the purpose of collection. Thirteen-one-six-seven-point-seven, removal of unauthorized accumulation of solid waste involving non-residents, again, that's non-residents, meaning that the property is more than likely vacant, or there was someone living there and they just abandoned the property and we need to go in and clean it up, we do have the authority right now to go in and do that. So one of the changes that we would like to put in, I first want to make sure you understand that all of these charges are misdemeanor charges, penalties are fines, not to exceed a thousand dollars and/or jail time, but that is, of course, at the judge's discretion, but we recommend that we set specific fines for the various violations based on the violation in prior charges, identified prior charges for the same violation would result in higher fines. We would not exceed the thousand-dollar limit or the jail time, but we would want them specific to whatever that violation is, and of course, we'd want those fines to be progressive depending on the number of times that we've had to deal with that individual. Currently, all, all, all charges are subject to the occupant of the property, we would recommend if and when the occupant, who is not the owner of the property, refuses to bring the violations into compliance, we want to be able to hold the owner of the property accountable, and subject to the same penalties to include court ordered abatement of the nuisance if necessary. On this one, so basically what we're asking for is that even though you are a landlord, and you have a tenant living in the home, and your tenant is a hoarder, we want to be able to have the judge to define or consider that property to be a nuisance, and give us the authority to go onto the property, even though it's occupied, and abate the nuisance. So when you're looking at property like the, the one that we've been dealing with recently, Hampshire, there's a person living in the home, he's got all kinds of solid waste, we've taken him to court, the judge's has extended the time period for him to bring it into, into compliance, but we found that through our years of training and working in this, people will still continue to leave the violation there, even though the judge is threatening them, the person has served jail time, they've gotten out, and they still have done nothing to it. We want to have the authority to go in and remove the nuisance and bring the property into compliance. Does that help? Okay.
We have Counselor Allen.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mayor, we had a situation out in my district where someone was hoarding, the neighbors brought it to my attention, we finally got him to Environmental Court, I think.
Correct.
What the, the owner was leasing or renting it to the family member, and the owner would go and pay the fine without going to court, so they circumvented for several months.
Right.
They circumvented the law, but I think this would, this would give you a little more teeth.
It would.
To help you do what you need to do.
Absolutely.
It took us almost a year to get this person taken care of, but I, I'm in favor of this, it's just, it shouldn't happen to a neighborhood, so.
Right, and I'd also, excuse me, I'd like to also state that any time that we're dealing with a person who's a hoarder, we'll just use that for definition, we will make it a point to contact adult protective services to make sure that they're involved as well, so that they see what we see, because oftentimes, when you're dealing with hoarders, there's some other issues that are also going on that they may need help with. So we don't want to just go in and abate it, we want the problem resolved, because often, if you don't deal with the person as well as the property, you're going to be right back where you started from, because the person is just going to continue the behavior.
And, and as you described, dealing with the person, in this situation, there was a small child involved.
Mm-hmm.
Can you imagine a child having to live in that type environment?
Right.
And it's just, it was bad.
And it's frustrating for my officers, you know, we go out there, we issue all the citations, we take them to court over and over and over again, but the violations still exist.
And y'all do a great job, you did a very good job on this.
Appreciate that. Excuse me, so again, we recommend this be amended to allow unoccupied properties, as well as hold the owner of the property accountable for the same penalties and/or liens placed against the property to include court ordered abatement of the nuisance. So what am I saying? We've got tenants, and the owner lives in Texas, we can't serve the owner in Texas any citations or summons unless you all are going to fly us to Texas, we're not going to do that. We want the owner to be held accountable, just like the tenant. The owner lives up in North Columbus somewhere, has property down in South Columbus, renting it out, the only person that we're dealing with right now is the occupant or the tenant. We want to be able to go and talk to the owner and say, this is your property, it's your tenant, you need to make sure that they're keeping it clean, and that's what we want to do, okay? Right now, we only deal with the occupant, we want to be able to treat the owner the same as the occupant if the occupant is not coming into compliance. So that's basically what my proposals are, we are working very closely with the city attorney's office to make sure that we're not overstepping our bounds as far as constitutional law and all that kind of stuff that's concerned, but we are recommending that these changes be made, and of course, if we do allow for the abatement of these nuisances, I would be remiss if I did not state that we would need funding to pay for the abatement of these nuisances, so I would like for you to keep that into consideration as well. And that's basically it, available for questions.
Okay, we have Counselor Barnes.
Not to mention the place, but that one property that I spoke about. I suppose, and on the thirtieth, talk me through what we're doing now.
Okay.
You know which one we spoke about?
I have not checked on that one, that was the one that we had a follow-up rate on.
Thirty days, yeah, no, we had.
Wouldn't have been thirty days, are you, you know, I think it was, yeah, we worked off addresses, I'm so sorry, it's the one that's, let me.
I want to bring that, can you turn this off?
Turn it off, okay, yes. Drell.
Oh, Lyndon.
Say it.
Those folks over there.
Yeah.
Continual.
Continual.
Problem, and I'm here, not from the one lady that is really catching it from that location, but from the neighbors as well, this woman is eighty-something years old. Now, I, I want to know the status of that, where we're at with that case.
Well, sir, we have attempted to issue a court summons to this gentleman for some time.
I can't hear you.
I'm sorry, sir. We, we have attempted to issue a court summons to that gentleman for some time now, it's been going on for about a month, we're going to send that over to Major Mancey's, over at the sheriff's department.
Good.
And see if we can get a sheriff's deputy over there.
Good.
To issue sometime in the evening.
This gentleman, now, and, and I kind of asked, because I wanted to be sure that he was not having any mental, this, this gentleman, and I, it's, he knows what he's doing. It's just, he's just obstinate, and it's really causing an imposition on the neighbors. So now, we are moving forward with the sheriff.
And that's something that all of you, I'd like to let you all know, is that the sheriff's department is graciously working with us, anytime we have a habitual violator that is obviously avoiding us, we can turn it over to the sheriff's department, who will then issue the summons for us, we give it to them, and all they got to do is find the person, so.
Good.
We are, we are working with them very closely in getting that done, but it is very frustrating, just like you said, we can go out there, six, seven, eight times, send different officers at different times of the day, and the person is making it a point to make sure that they are avoiding us. So I believe that when we first started these ordinances, the intent was that people would abide by the law, and if they were issued a warning, they'd go out and they'd rectify it, and then if they didn't, they'd get issued a citation and they'd fix it before they go to court, well, people are just becoming more and more defiant, for lack of words, they just, they don't care.
No one's above the law.
Right.
No one's above the law.
That's right.
And, and I know you have certain guidelines, and we're going to be going through a revision of this, because there's a number of things dealing, even with the front yards, not to even speak about the backyards, that we really need to do a complete redo. Okay, thank you.
But we will be.
So that's in the hands of the sheriff?
Yes.
Good.
But we'll be continuing to work with the city attorney's office and come back with a more defined and the actual law as it will be written for you all in the future.
All right, we have Counselor Huff.
Good afternoon.
Hi, how are you?
Thank you, I'm good, thank you, and yourself?
I'm good, thanks.
Good, I, well, thank you for a great presentation, but publicly, I wanted to say thank you. We had a lot of issues in my district that I asked you about, and things were taken care of very well, a couple of things we need to follow up on, but it went very well, and some people that had been really a nuisance for a good two or three years disappeared within the seven days. So thank you so much.
You're welcome. Okay, we have Counselor Garrett.
Thank you, Director Short, for what you're doing, I, I like the ideas you've put out here, I just kind of, I already hit the button before I heard Counselor Barnes speak, but I just want to make sure we do something that'll allow y'all to reach into the backyard too, because that's the Hampshire drive address, that's as bad, if not worse, than the front yard, so just whatever we can do to, legally we can do, but the city attorney allows to do, but.
We will do that.
Okay.
All right, I think that's it, Drell, for now.
Thank you.
Okay, Mayor, we want to thank Drell Short and her team, and John Hudgeson and his team, they do a great job, and so we appreciate that. One last update, and that is for our monthly finance update from Director Angelica Alexander. One last update and that is for our monthly finance update from Director Angelica Alexander.
All right, well, good afternoon, again. What you have before you is the monthly financial snapshot for the month of April, two thousand seventeen. I'm just starting on the right side of the snapshot with the operating funds, comparing current fiscal year revenue to prior fiscal year revenue. And the general fund is down two-point-nine-two percent. The other local option sales tax fund is down three-point-nine-nine percent. The stormwater sewer fund is up one-point-five-five percent. And the paving fund is up two-point-six-eight percent. The medical center fund is up point-nine-seven percent. Integrated waste is up eleven-point-six-five percent. The emergency telephone fund or the E-911 fund is up three-point-seven-eight percent. The economic development authority fund is up point-nine-seven percent. And the debt service fund is up five-point-one-one percent. The transportation fund is down three-point-four-nine percent. And just at this particular point in time, we haven't collect, received as much in grant revenue as of this point, as of April of seventeen that we did as of April of sixteen. The parking management fund is down eleven-point-two-zero percent. And the expenditures in the parking management fund is down as well. That's down almost five percent. So there is a decrease on the revenue side, but the expenditures are down as well. The trade center fund is up nine-point-one-nine percent. Bull Creek Golf Course is up three-point-eight-eight percent. Oxbo Creek Golf Course is up four percent. And the civic center fund is, when comparing April of this year to April last year, is showing to be down fourteen-point-one-eight percent. But again, with the civic center fund, it's a, it's a matter of the timing with certain events. The revenue is appearing to be down, but the expenditures are down about over thirteen percent as well. So we, we show ticket sales for events as revenue and then payments to promoters as expenditures. So both sides are, are actually down. And with the other local option sales tax, public safety summary, we've collected as of April seventeen-point-five million in revenue expenditures. We have seventeen-point-six million in expenditures on the O-Laws Public Safety side. For the other local, other local option sales tax, tax fund infrastructure summary, we've collected about seven-point-five million in revenue. And on the expenditure side, ten-point-six million in expenditures. I'm right below the other local option sales tax summary are the O-Laws positions that are filled and this is as of the end of April. With the police department, we have a hundred and four positions filled. Eight positions were filled in, for E-911. The fire department had twenty positions that were filled, twenty-six in the sheriff's office, five in the marshal's office, five in, from a Skokie County prison. All of the court-related positions were filled as of the end of April and the crime prevention position was filled as well. Migrating to the left side of the snapshot, looking at general fund revenues, we've collected eighty-point-eight-three percent of our budget in revenues in the, in the general fund. And that amounts to one-hundred-twenty-one-million-six-hundred-sixteen-thousand-two-hundred-and-five dollars. Below the general fund revenues are the general fund expenditures by department. What's highlighted in yellow are the departments that have exceeded the goal as of this particular point in time. And the goal for what we anticipate would be expended as far as departmental budgets is eighty-three-point-three-three percent. So anyone that's above eighty-three-point-three-three percent is highlighted here in yellow. For the city attorney's office, of course, we're still defending several million in claims. For information technology, it's really all about the, the timing of our Microsoft expenditures. We have not officially paid out, but we have obligated ourselves for the licenses for FY eighteen. And so there's a journal entry that will do to back that out of FY seventeen and, and record that in eighteen, but that wasn't done as of the end of April. So that's why IT is showing to be overspent at this particular point in time. And then there is employee benefits and that's of course due to the annual death and major disability benefit payments that we've made already and we won't incur those expenditures again in this particular fiscal year. So that in itself is the summary of the operating funds. Also, I have put in requests to update the other local option sales tax webpage with these current reports. On that webpage, you find the other local option sales tax infrastructure projects by project. The T-SLOSS projects to include the, the projects and the discretionary projects as well as the detailed revenue summary for all of the operating funds. And I'll take any questions if you have them.
All right. Looks like there's no questions at this time.
Okay, thank you, Angelica. Have one announcement. The Liberty District Town Hall meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, May the thirtieth at five-thirty PM. It will be held at the Annex Conference Room at four-twenty Tenth Street. And we will notify stakeholders, churches and businesses regarding this town hall meeting. Thank you. Five-thirty.
Counselor Thomas?
Ms. I've been asked by a couple of folks that read the article in the paper about the reconfiguration of Thirteenth Street and the, perhaps the changing of lanes and so forth. The question that I was asked that I couldn't tell them the answer to was who, who ultimately, if we decide, if it's decided to change the lanes and so forth on Thirteenth Street, who, who has that authority? Is that the city? Is it the Department of Transportation, the State Department of Transportation? Who makes that determination?
It would ultimately be GDOT, but they would be looking to the city to make the request for them to restripe it when they go in and resurface it. So we are doing this two-week test to be able to provide that information to council and it would be council's decision to make a recommendation to GDOT as to whether we proceed forward with reducing the lanes on Thirteenth Street or to leave the lanes the way they are.
And we would make the recommendation, but the decision really would rest with the GDOT so they could accept our recommendation or not, right?
That's correct.
And the, the, we're looking at, when is this test going to start?
It will actually start Thursday afternoon, May thirteenth and run through the twenty-seventh. So it will be a two-week.
This, is that this Thursday or next?
That would be this.
The thirteenth? This Thursday, isn't it?
The eleventh, sorry, the eleventh.
Yeah, so it starts on Thursday, the test time for two weeks.
That's correct.
Okay. I've had a, a number of people who are very, very concerned about the traffic flow on that. And that would be from Thirteenth Avenue to Veterans Parkway, right?
To Fifth. Just to Fifth Avenue.
To Fifth?
Yes, just to Fifth. Just across the viaduct to Fifth Avenue. It won't extend.
It won't extend that next block down to, so that next block down to Veterans would still be, would have a turn lane.
That's correct.
Two, two lanes and a turn lane.
That's correct. So it's from Thirteenth Avenue to Fifth Avenue.
Okay, thank you.
Any, any concerns, any, you can contact three-one-one and we'll track any of that.
Say that again so that our, our listening audience, if you will, will know what, what they might need to do if they have some concerns.
They should contact three-one-one with support or concerns and we'll compile that information as we hear from citizens through three-one-one and provide that information to council.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, all right. That concludes the city manager's agenda. So we'll move into the clerk and turn it over to Lindsay.
Madam Mayor and Council, on the clerk's agenda, the first two items are memorandums from Clerk and Council Washington outlining various board appointments that are coming up in, well, these are actually coming up the end of December, but according to law and our code, we have to do them in July, so they're coming two months ahead of time. We have a resolution excusing Counselor Woodson from today's meeting.
Got a motion in second to approve items three and four. All those in favor, please state aye.
Yes, sir.
All right, is that a motion? Okay, and a second from Counselor Allen. All those in favor, please state aye.
Number five is the email from Ms. Irene Pate in regards to the Recreation Advisory Board. She's asking that the seats of Ms. Tracy Bilt and Ms. Vanessa Jackson are declared vacant.
We got a motion in second. All those in favor, please state aye. We got a motion in second that the minutes be received from the Board of Tax Assessors, the Columbus Aquatic Commission, Deferred Compensation Board for several dates, the Hospital Authority of Columbus, the Personnel Review Board, the Recreation Advisory Board and the Tree Board. All those in favor, please state aye.
For board appointments, the Board of Evergreen Covington is still open on the Family and Children's Services. We actually have a citizen that's interested if we don't have any nominees today.
We've got Counselor Thomas.
I have a nominee, Chandra Huff.
All right, we will list Ms. Sharonda Huff at the next meeting for confirmation. On our Board of Tax Assessors, Counselor Baker nominated Mr. Moorefield at the last meeting. He can be confirmed.
Got a motion in second for confirmation. All those in favor, please state aye.
Our Circle Commission, we have two seats that are still open and we are working with the mayor's staff to try to get these filled. For Keep Columbus Beautiful, we have many seats open. Normally, Ms. Gloria sends me a list of those who are interested, so from what I understand, she is working on that. For our Land Bank Authority, the authority has submitted the names of Stephen Anthony, Jim Livingston and Anna Merritt for these seats and they can be confirmed.
Got a motion in second for approval. All those in favor, please state aye.
And that's all I have, Madam Mayor.
Okay, great. Well, that includes our, that concludes our agenda and I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. That's a motion in second from the mayor pro tem. All those in favor, please state aye. All right, we are adjourned, but stay tuned. We're going to take a quick break, reconfigure the room a bit and be back for budget hearings. Thank you all.